Welcome to the Kent City Council Meeting for August 15, 2017. Would you all please rise and join in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Where'd they move it? Oh.
It's there. It's still there.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So we're double-covered with flags. One of them was slightly covered by the state flag, I see. Okay. So our welcome, folks, and I see many of you know you're supposed to sign up as part of the public comment period. So any of you that wish to say something tonight to the council, please go ahead and get in line and sign up for tonight under public comment. Our city clerk now will call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mayor Cook.
Here.
Councilmember Barrios.
I'm here.
Council President Boyce.
Yeah.
Councilmember Boudel.
Here.
Councilmember Fincher.
Here.
Councilmember Higgins.
Here.
Councilmember Ralph.
Here.
Councilmember Thomas.
Here.
Thank you.
Any changes to tonight's agenda? There being no changes, do we have approval of the agenda then from the council?
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Agenda is approved. Moving on to public communications, we're going to begin with public recognition of the city. Dave Helt from our Kent Parks Recreation Community Services is going to speak. So Dave, while you come up to the microphone, this has to do with the USSSA Conference Men's and Women's Major Tournament. So Dave, let the audience know what we're talking about.
Test.
You don't have to get down to it, Dave. These are new, that's a new microphone. These are old.
Mayor, City Council, community members in attendance, I want to thank you for the opportunity to stand before you to discuss the impacts of tournaments we have each year here in the city of Kent. Usually I'm the person sitting in the back and providing information to our parks director, Julie, and she's up here talking to you folks, but she asked me briefly to discuss with you and to introduce a couple of individuals who will talk about how one event this year has impacted our community. Each year, the city contracts out over 60 baseball, softball, fast pitch, and soccer tournaments at four of our main athletic complexes, Hogan Park, Kent Memorial Park, Wilson Playfields, and Service Club Ballfields. Tournament's season typically runs from the first weekend in October, or first weekend in April and continues through the first weekend in October. This year, it has been met with some challenges due to the weather. Early spring, March, April, May, we had constant rain that played havoc on our weekend tournaments, leagues that were organized by the city here, Kent School District activities on our fields, as well as additional youth, adult practices, and games. Thus far, we've had 36 tournaments here in Kent, equating to over 800 teams played, 12,000 players on our fields, 1,600 games. Twelve events, however, have been canceled due to the poor conditions of the outfield's, and that was caused by the early rain. This would have been additional 275 teams played, 4,000 players, and over 500 games. Unfortunately, those games weren't played because of the conditions. The good news is, we still have 14 more tournaments to go between this coming weekend and the first weekend of October. Tournament teams come from our city, neighboring cities, up and down the I-5 corridor, Canada to California, west coast to east coast and beyond. We have seen teams this summer from western Pacific Islands like Saipan and Guam, as well as the Chinese Taipei National Fast Pitch Team that played six games over a three-day period up at Service Club Ballfields. Why is Kent, Washington, considered the place to play? Well, one, we continue to have great facilities, award-winning facilities, facilities that have multiple fields in one location, that's all ideal for tournament play. We continue to offer great service to the event organizers from the time that they booked the facilities, to our facility maintenance staff that maintains the fields before the events, during the fence, and after the events. Location, can't say enough about the location of Kent. It's right in the middle of Puget Sound, a lot of people live here in Kent and the surrounding areas, in our proximity to the airport because of the traveling teams that come in. Hotel motel lodging tax support. We have the lodging tax. Here in Kent, part of that can be used for, to track events, to help pay for the cost of the events. The committee there understands the value of these tournaments, and then, so we continue to have that support. Additional business support, Showware Center, Kent Commons Community Center, ICE Center next to Russell Road Park, area restaurants, coffee stands, grocery stores, gas stations. Not only support the teams coming in, but having these nearby help drive the economic impact of these events. Tonight, I'd like to introduce the event organizers who's hosted the largest event this season, June 22 through 25 at Hogan Park. These individuals have supported our programs and facilities for many years. Don Cooper, longtime resident of our city, currently is the Eastern Sports Director of Marketing and Sponsorship. He'll be up here in a minute. And then Strohian Kennison, the USSA, which stands for United States Specialty Sports Association, he's the Washington State Director. He's the actual tournament director for a number of events here in Kent. So this time, I'd like to invite them up to present to you the impact from the USSA major event this past summer.
Thank you. It's an honor for me to come here for once. I do this across the country, and this is my hometown for 30 years. I'm on a red-eye tonight to Louisiana to do this because we're using LSU's facilities for the next six days for a fast pitch. So it's great for me to be in my own hometown to do this. The event we held here brought in 84 teams. Only a handful of the teams were from Washington, Florida, New York, Texas, California. So our trackable, to give you guys a little reference, the trackable for that weekend just lodging revenue was $234,000. So it is a major impact, and that's on the adult side. On the youth side, which we would like to bring here, so kind of what David brought us here for was, we would love to foster a conversation outside of this room, maybe a task force or something to look at it. I live here, it's my hometown, as I said. I am the Director of Combat, Eastern and Bowers Sponsorships and Groups. We're the largest baseball, softball companies in the world. I would love to make this a home park for us. We ran that part of our business for many years in Kent. Unfortunately, we just moved it to California, but I said, "I'm not leaving Kent, I'm never going to California." So we think, well, we know, we can bring the largest events in the United States here. We had the CEO of USSA come here for the event, spent five days here, was amazed by the city. I think a big part of this is how well Hogan Park has ran, and how well that park has been ran over the years. I have written four letters to complexes in all the years that I've done this across the country, three of the four have come to this city, and it's not because it's my home city, it's because how well that park has been ran. The Hogan Park, I don't know if the council knows, is nominated for Facility of the Year for USSA. It is the finalist of the three. I cannot tell you, I have no idea, maybe Stroh does, the last time a city has won that. They have gone to privately-held companies, Big League Dreams, things like that. That's how impressed they were. They left here. The president of baseball has flown back up, met with Dave Helt, looked at the facilities, looked at Service Club, looked at the other things. We have, we are forwarding on to the council a video from Vera, Florida, that they are opening the county-based facility down there for a little over $200 million to base everything down there. We feel we could make Kent the west coast version of that, and we have a full support of USSA to do that. Most of the cities across America are coming into UTRIP to bid for, bid for those sites. They're willing to give the city that site. A part of it is Stroh's here, I'm here, there's some other key players that are here, location to the airport. So part of this is, we'd love to foster a further conversation down the road to see what we could do, but also, as I say, thank you for the Parks Department, how wonderful it's been ran. I know there's been some leadership changes. So for us on the ground, Dave has been our conduit, and I mean that with no disrespect to any of the other people that have come before that he's worked for, but Brian Saw and some of the people that at the park, I don't think, you folks probably don't understand what an amazing job they do there, with the weather that comes and goes. It's an amazing park and amazing, and I think it's an opportunity for us to bring millions and millions and millions of dollars to this community, really on a turnkey basis. Thank you.
I just want to take a minute and say what I've said to you in private meetings, that this gentleman right here is the best in the country at what he does. There's nothing that even comes close. I go all over the country and run tournaments. When I get to come here and sleep in a hotel in Kent, because I live in Shoreline and I don't want to fight the traffic, it's great to know that I have him in my corner when I come and run tournaments. I look forward to being here eight, nine times a year for my events, and I try to assist our other directors in continuing to bring more stuff here. This year's major tournament that we had was the most successful major we've ever had in Washington, and it starts with that man right there. So thank you. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Council President Boyce has a comment to make.
That's a comment. Thank you very much, and we appreciate your comments on Hogan Park. We love Hogan Park, we think it's a good facility, and I couldn't agree with you more. David, who I've been knowing for about 25 years, who's been doing it as their excellent leader and a good representation for the city of Kent and bringing softball to Kent. And I would say, you can go outside and start this conversation with David for long-range playing, because it's something we definitely will support, you know, bringing more activity than teams here at the camp. We think Kent is a great place to live, and it's a great place to raise your family and kind of a lot of good things to do. So I would think you will find this council will definitely support any long-term commitment to bringing softball here to Kent. So thank you very much, and David, good job.
Thank you. One last thing, if it's okay. I'm actually going back to Florida next week, and I'm going to ask for our Men's E-World Series to be here next year.
All right.
We'll see where that goes. Thank you.
Way to go. Thank you. So Dave, you did get that recorded, what President Boyce said, whatever you need? Yeah, I thought so. Yep, 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 budget time, okay. Now, we're going to move on to the, yes, oh, we have additional people. Councilmember Higgins, followed by Thomas.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to recognize the Kent police detectives and police force that kept working the case of the two people who were killed in a homeless camp a year ago, Robert Diaz and Luis Acampos. Just recently, very recently, a very honorable, moral person called our police department and gave them pertinent information, and we have now arrested a suspect in those two killings. And I just want to both recognize the Kent Police and this very special person who stepped forward to help bring justice.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Thomas.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mine's a little bit different. I had shared with the public about three weeks ago, or four, about the young man that had drowned in Lake Meridian, and thankfully, some people from the public jumped into the water, the fire department arrived, they got in the water, and they found the body of this young boy, and he was drowned. As they approached, they kept working on the fire department, kept working on them, they finally got a pulse, they took him to the hospital, and at that time, about three weeks ago, I had to ask for your thoughts and prayers as well. Well, they let him out of the hospital for four hours yesterday, and he came to our church. And he is walking, he's not talking totally, just in bits and pieces, but it's all starting to come back a little at a time, so it's truly a miracle, and I thank you for your thoughts and prayers.
Thank you, Councilmember. I'm now going to introduce the individuals who I'm recommending to the council for reappointment and to new appointments to the Kent Cultural Communities Board. And for those in the audience who are being appointed or will be appointed to the Cultural Communities Board, would you please come forward, please, and go ahead and stand right here and face the audience? So to begin with, new to the Cultural Communities Board would be Gustav Sabatwehr. And Gustav, I'm actually going to ask you to go to the microphone, and if you would wait just a moment, please. Sarah Franklin Phillips, I don't believe she was able to make it to, where is she? Oh, I couldn't see you, Sarah. All right, Sarah, you're in line at the microphone following Gustav. We have reappointments of Ted Schwartz, Rand Alhamadi, Vival Samisi Tupul, Marvin Eckfeld, Sonia Morales, Osgweda, Yusuf Basir, Husan Alkinnani, Cesar Rangel, Seth Winder Carr, Sean Shook Carr, Misner Rahman, Davy Chirwa, Norma Maldonado, Samia Abion, Taquasa Se, excuse me, Taquasa Se, and then our alternates, Dr. Herbert Carey and Marwa Alumsawi. So these individuals are being recommended to the council for reappointment, and I'm going to ask our existing members to just say one sentence as to why they want to be reappointed, but meanwhile, if we could have our newly-appointed members, beginning with Gustav, if you would tell the council why you wish to serve.
Hi, my name is Gustav Sabatwehr. I came to this country as a refugee from Democratic Republic of Congo. I arrived here in 2013, and since I came, I was so much involved in to newly-arrived refugees from the eastern part of Congo, and I volunteered and working together with them. Currently, I'm working as a preferred community case manager with Jewish Family Service. Last year, I was talking to Thar, who is a member of the Kent Cultural Community Board, and he explained to me about the board and what they do. This attracted my interest, and I wanted to get my community, the Congolese community, more involved and engaged into Kent and to kind of like help them to understand the resources and things that are going on within the city that we now call our home.
Thank you, Gustav. Then we have Sarah Franklin Phillips. She would be new to the board.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, councilmembers. Mayor, thank you for this consideration and appointment to the Cultural Communities Board. I am a resident of Kent. I'd like to thank you for letting me speak. I'd also like to recognize my husband, who's sitting in the back, who's been a great supporter of mine and knows I'm very passionate about advocating for the community, particularly when so many folks are moving to South King County. Kent is a wonderful place, and that the resources and the kind of commitment that we have as community members across cultural communities, that we are doing the best that we can, and I look forward to being part of that process. Currently, serve on the Washington State Board on Commission on African-American Affairs, appointed by Governor Jay Inslee in 2013. I also serve on the nonprofit board that works with communities of color to provide the kind of resources necessary. So I believe I have such a passion for community service, and I feel very privileged and honored to be appointed to the board today. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, for each of the reappointees, if you would state your name, what your heritage is, and one sentence, why you want to continue serving.
Thank you. My name is Norma Maldonado. I'm from Peru, South America, and I advocate for the Hispanic community in Kent. I'm really happy to continue as a council member, CCB. And yeah, I'm really happy, and we will continue to support my community in this hard time, and advocate for all the community in Kent, and yeah, I'm here.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And you notice the sentences have a lot of "ands" in them. All right. Seth Winder, yeah.
Good evening, councilmembers and mayor and audience. I'm Seth Winder Carr. I belong to Sikh community. Sikh is a faith from India, north, east, northwest part of India. And I am honored to be reappointed again to Cultural Communities Board, because it gives me the chance to learn about our diverse community that we have in Kent, and bring my Sikh community and other Indian communities together, so we can all work on issues that we have in our city and the concerns that everybody has, because when it comes down to it, we all have the same concerns and the same issues. And thank you, and I'm very glad to be here again.
Vival?
Mayor Cook and the council members. My name is Vival Samisi Tupul. I'm a PhD student, finishing my doctorate, hopefully to graduate in June next, this coming year. I represent the Pacific Island community. I would like to have, have the, I was born and raised in New Zealand, but I live in Kent for the last 20 years. I would like the Pacific Island community to be involved in this great city, as a welcoming city. This city is just amazing, it's welcoming diversity. So once again, thank you much.
Thank you. Mizan?
My name is Mizan Rehman. I represent Bangladesh communities in the city of Kent. I'm honored to be reappointed for the Cultural Communities Board. I'll continue my effort in smart integrating my communities with the rest of the communities living in this city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sami Habouyan. I'm a high school student at Kentwood High School, and I want to be reappointed because culture has been very important to me, and so I also represent the Bengali Muslim heritage here, and I just want to address any conflicts or issues in our community and also in other communities in Kent, and be able to solve them as a youth in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. And I apologize, because I think, Samia, that we did not officially accept you into the Cultural Communities Board before. So you've been coming, but you've been an alternate, so now you are official, so the council realizes that distinction. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Yusuf Basir. I'm from Somali Bantu, and I have been appointed last year for this cultural committee, and we actually started some great things together, so I want to see the end. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Davis Chiro. I'm originally from Central Africa. I've enjoyed serving on the board for the last year. I have a very strange platform which attracts the youth, because as many of you know, I work with the Seahawks and the Sounders and some of the celebrities, so I find it easier to talk to the youth. And I took that responsibility and just use it as a bridge to gap between the youth and the elderly in the community. So it makes it easier for me to communicate with the youth. In the African community, you have the separation of the youth and the elderly folks because of communication, and so that's just been a privilege for me to take advantage of the platform, to find a common ground and use that. So I currently serve on a few boards, but this is one of the few that I really, really treasure, because it gives me an opportunity to do something right here at home where we live. So thank you again.
Thank you, Davis.
My name is Marvin Eckfeld. My heritage is European-American. I've been a resident of this community for 50 years. One of our new taglines is, "The world has come to Kent." And it's been a real exciting thing this year to see the Cultural Communities Board find its legs and feet, and the inclusion and acceptance that this board has been able to demonstrate, both within the board and its work in the community, is refreshing, encouraging, and hopeful.
Thank you.
My name is Ted Schwartz, and I'm representing the European-American community also. I want to I want to thank the mayor and all council for starting the Cultural Communities Board. I think, I want to thank you for the foresight. I think it's really important that we recognize the diversity in our population. As other people said, the board has come a long way this past year. I think the culminating event in the first year was the forum for the mayoral candidates. So candidate Barry O'Sullivan, hopefully we'll have another one for you to attend, and also the council members who are running again for council. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Ted. Those are most of the Cultural Community Board appointees for your consideration tonight. Moving on to community events. What announcements, Council President Boyce?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a few events is coming on for Showware Center. We got Disney on Ice is coming, Follow Your Heart, Come to Showware Center. What a nice title. That's for November 1st through the 2017. I know this early, but you want to go, you need to get your tickets right away. So tickets are available online, so you want to try to get those right away.
They do sell out.
And they do sell out quick. We're also having a Women Flat Track Derby Association, roller derby, and that's coming on September 1st through 3rd.
But it's only a flat track? We don't...
Yeah. Madam Mayor, I think they want to invite you to come as well, too. And also, the best of the best, Comedy Jam. That should be a fun event coming on Saturday, September 9th at 8 o'clock, so something that you want to think about. And our championship team, the Seattle Tea Bird, will be starting up on Saturday, September 16th at 7:00 PM. So that's what we have got going on Showware, and also we talked about early about the USSA softball, so you get a chance to go and watch some of those events. The weather's going to be nice, so hopefully you get a chance to go and cheer some of their teams on. So that's what I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Ralph?
Thank you, Your Honor. Couple of events to talk about. First of all, this is the last week to enjoy our summer concert series. There's still a couple of events coming. Wednesday, tomorrow afternoon, at Town Square Plaza, is our last kids' concert. Wednesday night, our final concert at Kent Station, so you can go grab a seat on the patio. There's lawn seating and catch a concert there. And finally, on Thursday, is our final concert out at Lake Meridian. Those are all free to the community sponsorship between our Kent Arts Commission and Kent Station, so I encourage you to check them out while they're still running. The other event is coming this Saturday, and it's the Officer Down 5K Community Run. So it's an event that honors our police officers who put their lives on the line daily to keep our community safe. It's an all-day community event, starting at 8 o'clock, with check-in, a variety of activities for the family, and a 5K run down at Three Friends Fishing Hole. So if you're interested in that, you can search for it on Facebook, Officer Down 5K.
Okay, thank you. Public safety update. So we have with us our Assistant Chief Padilla.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Chief Thomas has asked that I present his report this evening. He's enjoying a much deserved vacation. So I wanted to start with the report on the National Night Out. That was conducted on August 1st, a couple Tuesdays ago. For those not familiar with the event, National Night Out is an annual community-building event that promotes police-community partnerships and neighborhood camaraderie to make our neighborhoods safer and more caring places to live. National Night Out enhances the relationship between neighbors and law enforcement while bringing back true sense of community. You know, this started off as a great opportunity for law enforcement to get out and engage with the communities and neighborhoods, and specific to the city of Kent, it's turned into something where it's really an entire-city-wide event. We have representation from all city departments come out. We have our elected officials, thank you very much. And it's just a wonderful event where the city really puts on a great representation of collaboration and partnership, so it was great. This year, we were able to support 91 events throughout the city. We fielded 32 teams consisting of 87 representatives, and I think we made nearly all of the events. I know there were some events that got done before we could get there, but we got to most of the events. Special thanks to John Pagel, who was the lead from our Community Education Unit, strongly supported by Stacy Jobbs. So a lot of people came out to help that event. And we expect, as we have in several years, to be in the top 10 in the nation for cities our size. So we'll see. That will come later, probably. Here's some pictures. I forgot to scroll through. Jalen's going to kill me because she can put these together. So, as you can see, great event. The next part of the report is I wanted to provide an update on the officer-involved shooting we had on August 9th, just after midnight. The incident occurred at the Sultan Hookah Bar up on the east hill of Kent. Initially, our officers responded to domestic violence order violation, and after speaking to the victim there, who had been the victim of prior domestic violence and prior order violations, the officers confirmed that the suspect had outstanding warrants for his arrest, including a felony warrant for vehicle theft, domestic violence warrant, and a warrant for theft. Additionally, the officers were made aware that the suspect may have been armed and may have been associated with stolen vehicle and would most likely run when they attempted to try and contact him. So the officers staged, they put together an arrest plan, they set up officers and a K-9 unit on the backside of the business, hoping to take him into custody without incident. Unfortunately, when the officers tried to make contact, the suspect did run out the back. He actually ran out, saw the officers back there, ran back in, and then ran back out. What the officers didn't know at the time is that he had staged a car backed up to the business, and he was able to quickly get in the car. Our K-9 officer deployed the K-9, which engaged the suspect at the driver's side door. One of the officers moved around to the passenger side, and the suspect resisted physically very aggressively, and they had a hard time getting him in custody. Somehow, the suspect got that car started, and he drove it down the alleyway in the back there, dragging the K-9 and the K-9 officer, and having the officer in the passenger side trapped in the car, because during the shrug of the car door closed, and so they're going down the alley. One of the officers on the backside of the alley there saw what was going on, saw the officers getting drugged, and he fired on the suspect on the passenger, or driver's side of the car. The officer inside the car also fired to try and stop the suspect. Immediately following, they rendered life-saving CPR and first aid, and unfortunately, the suspect died from his injuries. So injuries to the officers, there was some confusion in the media. Both the K-9 officer and the K-9 were injured from being drugged. The other two officers were okay physically. The case now has been turned over, as with all of our officer-involved shootings, to the Valley Investigations Team. It's an independent investigation that's done. The team is made up of multiple departments that look at this, and Renton has taken the lead in this investigation, so that investigation's ongoing. You know, it's always tragic when there's a loss of life, but I can tell you from the information provided to me, this person was on a course of aggression and escalating violence, domestic violence, and stalking behavior and felonious crimes. And so unfortunately, the circumstances are such that the officers were put in a position where their lives are in danger, and they had to take action. So, just update on that. Next up on the report is, as mentioned by Councilman Higgins, I'm pleased to report that we were able to make an arrest in the double homicide that occurred last August, August 12th exactly. As mentioned earlier, a year or two on the anniversary date, we received information that allowed our detectives to take all of the evidence that we had been looking at up to now and quickly identify a suspect. That came in pretty late at night. The detectives deployed right away. They brought in our special investigations unit and our SWAT team, because this was a homicide suspect we were looking for. And after several hours of searching, we were able to locate the suspect in Covington and take him into custody without incident. As mentioned earlier, if it wasn't for the assistance of an upstanding person to come forward, to have the courage to provide the information that was needed to put everything together, I may not be able to stand here today and tell you that we've had some progress in this case. So it represents a significant step towards bringing justice to the family and the victim, so good movement on that. Next up, racer emphasis. There's been some media recently, I think out of Renton, regarding some of the issues, and we've had been facing this issue for years in our city here. The city of Kent Police Department has partnered with several agencies throughout the region, WSP, Taquilla, Renton, Auburn, Federway, and others, and we've been conducting racer emphasis to deal with the issue. We conducted one this past Sunday, and were able to make 30 contacts, resulting in 29 tickets, nine criminal arrests, including racing, attending illegal street racing and DUI, and it was the second major emphasis that we conducted this year. And there are, and we can put this right out there for all the would-be illegal racers, we are conducting future emphasis going on. So we're to come on that. And next up, I'd like to call Officer Albert Kim up, please, for a swearing in. All right. Officer Kim was born in Honolulu, grew up in Federway. He is a graduate of the University of Washington and says here in 2016, and speaks English, Korean, and Japanese, and prior to becoming a police officer, spent years teaching K-12 students at supplemental, at a supplemental learning center. Officer Kim is a welcome addition to the KPD family. That, Mayor?
This is the swearing in, to make you official. So if you would, please, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Albert Kim.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the United States of America.
To the United States of America.
The state of Washington and the city of Kent.
State of Washington and the city of Kent.
That I will uphold the Constitution.
That I will uphold the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States and the state of Washington.
And the laws of the United States and the state of Washington.
And that I will obey the rules and regulations.
And I will obey the rules and the regulations.
Of the Kent Police Department.
Of the Kent Police Department.
Yes!
And Mr. Kim, real quick, I believe you have family members in attendance?
Yes, so I have my mother and father and my uncle in the back there. They're supporting me.
And last but not least, we have some citizen commendations to hand out. This will be a little tricky, because I wasn't able to get with them before, so if Grant Crosby and Antonio Trujillo, if you're here, please come forward. Come right up here, just face the crowd. Welcome, gentlemen.
Yay! Breathe, breathe.
So as you know, and kind of in theme with a lot of the report tonight, a lot of our success comes with strong partnerships and help from our community. And so this is an example of that. I'll read the commendation here. It says, "On April 24, 2017, Officer Jason Cliff was working an off-duty assignment at the West Hill Fred Meyer store. He was at the front entrance of the store and heard the door alarm begin to sound. He exited the store, and a witness directed his attention to a male suspect who had stolen an armload of baby clothing and was running through the parking lot toward a specific highway. Officer Cliff gave chase on foot but quickly lost sight of the suspect. Officer Cliff got to the nearby gas station and two subjects, Mr. Grant Crosby and Anthony Trujillo..." I hope I'm saying that right. "...drove up and told him, basically, they asked him, he told him the suspect had ran that way, and they asked him, he asked, they asked him if he needed a ride. He took the ride, and they assisted him." And they drove him toward the suspect who was last seen. They located him, he ran again, and basically, these two gentlemen stood with Officer Cliff and helped him find the suspect and take him into custody for theft. So this Chief Citizens Award is presented in appreciation for your service and assistance. Any other questions?
So do we have some family members as well that are present from... Do you want...family? You had to be part of this and the support you've offered these two young gentlemen, so stand-up family. Thank you. And I want to know what police department you're going to join for your future career. Seriously.
She'll swear you in now.
Thank you.
I want to know how fast you were going.
And thank you, Assistant Chief Padilla. Intergovernmental reports, Council President Boyce?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As council member, in addition to our job as sitting on the council, we also sit on regional board as well, committed to representing the city of Kent. I myself sit on the Sound Cities Association Committee. We normally meet every month, but we took the month of August off, so we didn't have a meeting. I do want to say to my council member, as we come towards the end of the year, as you know, we'll be signing up for new committees and board members, so as we get the list, we want to make sure that we fill the gaps and make sure we have a good representation for council member sitting on those committees. With that said, I will start to my left, Councilman Budel, and we'll just come down this way one by one, and talk about something that's going on the committee or the board that you sit on.
Thank you, Council President. I sit on the Sound Cities Association's Domestic Violence Initiative Committee. We had our second meeting of the year, May 18th. We actually have our third meeting of the year on this Thursday, August 17th, at the Mercer Island Community Events Center. Some of the things that we're going to be talking about is the firearm process improvement update on getting people to, who have domestic violence charges against them, and their victim has stated that they have weapons to actually surrender those weapons. We're going to get prosecution updates, and we're going to hear from the Child Advocacy Center about the domestic violence and firearm surrender and how that is helping to make homes safer. So I will have a full report at our next council meeting.
Thank you, Council President. I serve on the Regional Transit Committee, King County, which meets monthly at the King County Courthouse. Our last meeting was on July 19th. We had three reports from Metro staff. One was on the speed and reliability statistics for 2016. The second report was on the In Motion, which is an In Motion program, which is tailored marketing, where they send out flyers to people in individual communities about the services that are available. services that are available in that community. Kent had an edition of it about five years ago, and I learned in that report that Kent will be target of another edition of the In Motion report within the next two years. So that's good news. And then the final report we received was about the Metro Connects, the capital improvement projects that Metro is planning through the year 2020, and that list is in the minutes if you'd like to review it. We have no August meeting, so our next meeting will be in mid-September.
Good Council President, and I belong to the Puget Sound Regional Council Economic Development Board, and we have been working on a long, long process of a regional economic strategy, about two years now. And we had, our last meeting was July 12th, and in that meeting, we thought we were really close to bringing together what this strategy was going to look like, and basically, you know, we're looking at goals, strategies, and the process that the board will be doing the implementation. We did have some challenges within that. The staff went back on August 23rd, or, well, a week ago, and has worked through this, some of the challenges that were brought up. On August 23rd, we will be getting a update draft and hopefully close to the final that will be coming out from the staff. On September 6th, we're going on record that we're anticipating approving this two-year-long process and being able to come back with the final regional economic strategy for the Puget Sound Regional Council. And that's it.
Several of the committees that I serve on did not meet in August. Transportation Policy Board took an August break, and we will be reconvening in September, working on the Transportation 2040 update. Sound Cities Association Board also did not meet this month. I did attend the South County Area Transportation Board meeting this morning. Our primary presentation was from Metro on alternative services, what is now being called Community Connections Program, and it's a four-year demonstration project funded by the county to provide transportation, public transportation and mobility services to parts of King County that don't have the infrastructure, the volume of riders or land use available for those fixed route rides, those things that you're used to getting on the 150 and riding into South Center. So we know that our communities, even in communities like Kent, we have gaps in that service. You get out further, communities like Black Diamond, Maple Valley, Algonah, Pacific, there's no way for those residents on public transportation to get essentially anywhere. There's not, they need to get to the store, those routes aren't available. So this Community Connections Program is working on putting that together. They've got some of the programs that are already up and running. They're working in, on a commuter shuttle in Birion, some connections for folks in Normandy Park. Auburn is working on a pilot program that links smartphones to van pools, so you can go, you can use your smartphone to essentially call a van pool from the Lee Hill area that will get you down to the transit station. So it's not committing to that, I will be in the van pool every day, but say, you know, three days a week or something comes up and you want to ride the van pool. So it's, it's making it more flexible and encouraging more people, more people to be able to use transit. Kent is on the list of potential projects, and that will be in the beginning of the planning and outreach phases towards the end of this year. So it's a, it's an exciting program for those of us in the South End. It is a little bit more difficult to get where we need to go using public transit, so this is a way to provide those services.
I serve on the Mental Illness and Drug Dependency Advisory Council. We will be meeting next Thursday, and we will, we are also working on getting our budget and our program of work to King County Council this month, August, when that's due. Today, Mayor John Stokes of Bellevue and I, we both sit on the King Conservation District Advisory Council. He chairs, I'm Vice Chair of that. We presented our plan of work to the King County Council. Let's see, it was the Transportation Economy and Environment Committee this morning, and so everything went well. We had all of our ducks in a row. It was nice to hear them say that what we said we were going to do in our plan, we did. And what KCD does, King Conservation District, is we are tasked with looking out and taking care and enhancing our waterways, both the riparian waterways and our shoreline, so our, rather habitat. We look at making sure that our food supply, urban and rural. So we want to make sure, not only if you're a farmer out in Enhamclaw, but if you're somebody with a lot here that you might want to grow produce on, or if you work with a school that has a garden plot, or you know how an industrial airport or hospital system can get better, more dense, nutritionally-dense food to the population that they serve, we want to help you be able to do that. If you're an egg farmer, we want to help you be able to increase that, get more food to the farmer's markets. Our goal is to get more nutritionally-dense food grown in King County that is eaten in King County. And we also look out for our forest, making sure that the forest canopy is healthy, and we are also now stepping into looking how that affects our stormwater. So we met with the county today, and our regular meeting is tomorrow. More to report then.
Madam Mayor, I ends my reports.
Thank you, councilmembers. Tonight, we have no public hearing, but you wouldn't know that by the audience. We do have public comment next, and because we have a lot of people signed up for public comment, here's what I'm going to do. I'm going to call out four names at a time, if you would line up by this microphone, and you will have up to two minutes to speak. If you have not finished your comments within two minutes, our city clerk, you will hear the bell, or what does it sound like? Oh, that, that's really soft.
I'll turn it up.
Oh, please, okay, just, so you know that that is when you finish the sentence you're on. All right. So again, I'll call four names. I will apologize in advance, as I try to, most of you wrote very clearly. A few I'm questioning if I'm getting the right letters in there. So we'll begin with, and I might mention to the audience, all of the names I'm calling on, and for the council to know, these are all people wishing to speak on the topic of safe injection sites. The first person wrote, "safe consumption sites." So whatever it is the topic, I think the news did quite well at getting the word out yesterday and today. So beginning with Susan Olson, Phil Mosick, Chris Marone, Amelia Bertozzivilla. So if you would, state your name and your address for the record when you begin, please. Thank you, Susan.
Hi, my name is Susan Olson, and my address is 412 East Meeker Street, Apartment 1, Kent, Washington. I'm here as a citizen of Kent, a mother, a grandmother, an aunt, a friend, and a family member. The opioid problem is no longer in us and them, it's a we problem, and a safe consumption site is a step towards a we solution. Please understand, safe consumption sites are a controlled medical location that must meet required safety standards, much like any other medical facility. Safe consumption sites are helping people that seek assistance like they seek out a normal medical facility, but at a safe consumption site, we are offering medical supervision and the resources to start a path to life-changing opportunities. From 2002 to 2013, King County witnessed an 80.7% increase in admissions to rehab facilities because of opioid use. While the use of cocaine and methamphetamine has been on the decline, heroin, heroin use and trafficking has been an ultimate high. Deaths in Kent related to illegal drugs are at a rate of 10.5 deaths per 100,000 residents. The creation of safe consumption sites will be an asset to the community, decreasing the individuals using in open common areas, decreasing improper disposal of used syringes, decreasing Hep C, HIV, and reducing public health risk of other possible infections. Thirty-six percent of all HIV cases, according to the CDC, were directly related to IV drug use. We will decrease overdoses. Increase public safety for the community and the individuals we are trying to reach, increase the possibility for the individual to get the resources they need. Safe consumption sites allow human services to meet the individual where they are at in a safe environment with supervision and the support to help them towards harm reduction and a positive, productive lifestyle. Safe consumption sites are not a location just to use drugs. These are locations that will be offering connections to mental health, treatment, equipment to help reduce risk of infection, and location to stop the stigmatation of drug use. As an individual in recovery, I can personally say that when I found out someone cared, that's where my life changed, and I made positive steps. I'm asking you guys, please make Kent a city that cares.
Thank you. Phil, followed by Chris.
Hi, my name is Phil Mosick. I'm a visitor to Kent. I live in Tacoma, Washington, and before I realized that I was not wealthy and I wanted to buy a house, I lived for 15 years on Capitol Hill in Seattle. So I lived in a place that, like Kent, had a significant population of people without homes, and I lived around people who were dealing with substance abuse disorder. I now work in Pioneer Square in Seattle and take public transit to and from there, so I'm still around lots of people who live on the streets and do not have their own private space and who are dealing with various substance abuse disorders. And I really believe in harm reduction tactics. I remember when my neighbors were picking up needles in Calenders Park across from where I lived, and eventually they put in Sharps containers so people had a place to put those things. And more recently, I was excited to find that the experts assembled by King County and Seattle decided that one thing that could be done to help with the opioid epidemic was to establish medical facilities where people could use drugs in a supervised, in a supervised place. It's still not safe, but safer than it otherwise would be, and safer is better. And I was disappointed to find that city after city outside of Seattle are banning these facilities as if to promote the idea that people should continue to use their drugs in restrooms and alleys and public parks. We have syringe exchanges and they work, but unfortunately now we tell people, well, here's a clean syringe, go find a place to shoot up, like in an alley or in a Starbucks restroom, and that's terrible. And so we have more compassionate option, and I hope that you all will consider what the medical experts are saying, that these facilities work, they reduce deaths, and they're a good thing. Thanks.
Thank you, Phil. Chris?
Hi there. My name is Chris Knrup. I live at 401 North 46th Street, Seattle, Washington. So I'm not a resident of Kent, obviously. I am a resident of King County, and I was an advisor to the King County, Seattle King County Task Force, which recommended a whole suite of recommendations, among them was the CHL sites, or safe consumption sites. I have been involved in work from a public health and a public safety perspective with drug users for almost 30 years, and the situation right now, both in Kent, in Seattle, and nationally, is worse than at any point that I can remember. Last year, more US citizens died of drug overdoses than died in any year of the AIDS epidemic in the United States. Last year, more people in the United States died from drug overdoses than the combined total of US casualties in the Vietnam War. And Kent is the third-highest city in King County with fatal drug overdoses. So even if you don't care at all about life, what I want to talk to you about is this: money. Because you're paying for this right now, whether you like it or not. The lifetime cost of care for someone with HIV is $367,000. I've got 10 grand right here. That pays for 1/36 of the lifetime cost of care for someone with HIV. Lifetime cost of care for hepatitis C, over $100,000. One single case of endocarditis, which is a bacterial infection caused by dirty injection, $750,000 for one single case. This would pay for 1/75th of that. The state of North Carolina did an analysis of how much it costs them for a drug overdose that goes to an emergency room. The average cost is $7,600 for a drug overdose that results in someone going to the emergency room. That's the only one of these items that that 10 grand would cover, is one person going to the emergency room for an overdose. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And following Amelia, I'm going to ask the following four people to come forward. We have John, is it Nagle, Yanko Kusaka, Matt Baum, and Stephen Smith. Thank you, Amelia.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Amelia Bertozzivilla. I live at 1521 15th Avenue, Unit 8, in Seattle, Washington, and I am an, oh, excuse me, I'm an epidemiologist who has published work on opioid mortality, both on the county level within the US and on the census tract level here in King County. And I'd like to speak today about our health system in the county. So if you think about it, when a teenager texts while driving and injures himself in a crash, and he goes to the hospital, we don't say to him, "You brought this upon yourself, and so we won't treat your injuries." Instead, we say to him, "You too deserve not to die, and we will help you." When a lifelong smoker develops lung cancer, we do not say to him, "You brought this upon yourself, and we will cut off your treatment if you smoke even a single cigarette." Instead, we say to him, "You too deserve not to die, and we will help you." We save these lives in the hope that the teen will stop texting while driving and that the smoker will stop smoking, but above all, we save these lives simply because it's the right thing to do. And all that we are asking of you today is that you extend this same morality to the lives of addicts. All that we are asking of you today is that you turn to this group of your citizens and say to them, "You too deserve not to die today. We will help you as you are in this moment, in the hope that you will survive to another day, when you feel ready, when you will remember our compassion, and come back to the healthcare system to seek recovery." I beg of you today to please vote against a ban on supervised consumption sites in Kent.
Thank you, Amelia. John?
My name is John Nagley, and I actually reside in Auburn, but I work in Kent. I'd like to share my opinion about safe injection sites. I was an intervening heroin user for over 10 years, and I'm here to ask you not to spend our taxpayer money on enabling and condoning the illegal use of narcotics. We need a solution, a long-term solution. We need to spend the money on more detox facilities and long-term treatment programs with an emphasis on life skills. If I was currently using and wanting help right now and had no money or insurance, it could easily take up to three months to get into a detox facility. Then after detox, I couldn't afford a long-term treatment program or even a 30-day treatment program. We need to make these kind of facilities more accessible so they have time to change their behavior, their attitude in their lives, and the only way to help save a life is getting them off what can kill them, not enabling them to use what will kill them. We need a long-term solution, not longer enablement to use. Thank you.
Thank you. Yanko?
Hello, councilmembers, mayor, and audience. My name's Yanko. I, as well as John Nagley, was a heroin user for four years, and had I known about these sites, I would not be sober today. The reason being is because I love being enabled. So I believe that that's what these places would be doing, is doing a lot of enabling. So we don't need to make it safe and cozy because there are consequences to using drugs. If there wasn't any consequences to using drugs, addicts will not stop. So we put the idea out that illegal drugs can be, can be taken safely, then we're nothing but enablers. So I believe that we should do, put programs in place to have a proven measure of success in helping addicts get off drugs. I believe that the cost of rehabilitating one student and turning them into a functioning member of society is far less than allowing the addict to continue with their negative lifestyle that contributes nothing to their own well-being or to societies. That is all I have. Thank you for letting me share.
Thank you, Yanko. Matt?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. My name is Matt. I'm a resident of Kent. I reside at 945 Central Avenue North. I come before you today as a man in recovery. I used drugs intravenously for 10 years, overall for 14 years. I'm here to speak out and hope to vote on a ban for safe consumption sites, and I only have my own personal experience to speak on, but I know for me, there had to be a pain point created, and if there, if I would have had an outlet like a safe consumption site, I never would have had that pain point. I do believe in harm reduction, but I believe safe consumption sites go too far. Examples in Vancouver and in Amsterdam have shown us this is the foot in the door to get to state sponsorship dosing of your citizens, where they actually provide doses beyond safe kits and rigs. So it's a very scary thought to me. The element that this would bring around the consumption site would be an increased measure of crime, prostitution, drug dealers, and ultimately, I think, if we have a law in place saying that you cannot use drugs except for right here, that's contradictory to our laws, and I believe if we have laws in place, we need to, we need to... And I believe if we have laws in place, we need to enforce them. But for me personally, I do not want to see the degradation of our community that would come from that. I believe the element that would come in would be damaging to Kent's very rich culture. It would lessen it, and I believe that you must be accountable for your actions. I used for 14 years, and I had to get myself out of it. If I'm going to a safe consumption site, I know counseling is offered there, but if I have a room to shoot up in and counseling, I'm not going to choose the counseling. I know that's a great outlet to have there, but the reality is, most people will not choose that if they're coddled and allowed to do that. So in your upcoming vote, that's my point of view. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Okay, following Stephen is next. Following Stephen, I'm going to call up Tarina James, Jane Cutter, JS Pate, and Patricia Sully.
Ready?
Thank you.
Thank you for, Madam Mayor and City Council. My name is Steve Smith. I live on West Hill. My address is 2909 South 260th Lane. Three things, actually. I want to thank you for the new sidewalks on both sides of 260th Street to Pack Highway. In the wintertime, very hard to walk in the dirt, so thank you for that. I did have an opportunity to work with the Kent Police Department last week. I saw domestic violence on Pack Highway, called 911. Officer came and released the two people, walked away. I did have a question on the procedure and how that was done. Talked to one of your commanders. He got back to me very quickly, and then followed up about a week later. And one thing that he did mention to me is that they did release him because of mental health. They've had a long-term history of crimes up and down Pack Highway, and they could arrest him, but they would have had to release him down the road. And he said, "One thing is his mental health." And when this all came up with the injection sites, where do we spend our money? If we can't help somebody with mental health, how can we help somebody with injection sites? We tried to put, in our borders, we have a marijuana, we now have a marijuana site in our borders between Des Moines and Kent. We tried to put a recovery center in between Des Moines and Kent, and that fell through. Where do we, kind of where do we draw the line? We should be able to help our own residents with mental health long before we invite everybody to come in. I mean, King County alone does not have a way of paying for this. Does that money actually come from the city of Kent? Would we have to fund this? If we have to fund this, where do we have to draw to fund, to help that? So that's all, actually. Need to beat the buzzer, so.
Thank you, Stephen. All right, Tarina James, and followed by Jane Cutter, JS Pate. Do I have that all right? Okay.
She's in the right order. Hi, I'm Tarina James, and I'm a resident of Auburn. I've been a resident of Auburn pretty much since 1997. I did live in Seattle for a very short time, and when I was in Seattle, I became homeless. And I relapsed after 17 years of sobriety, doing heroin. I am here to vote against the ban, and the reason why is, I want people to understand that we're not just trying to say, "Come on, let's go over here and do drugs." It's not about that. It's about trying to save lives. It's about trying to stop infections from going around that are losing, people are losing limbs. People are dying. People are losing, their loss of, what am I trying to say? Their quality of life is gone once they are in that situation. Because when you're homeless, and you're on the streets, and you're trying to do the drugs, you don't have a safe place to go do it. You don't have an apartment to go do it. And that's what these safe consumption sites are really about. I happen to be a local member. I'm one of the first people to help to start the safe consumption sites to go. And we're not, again, it's a medical facility where people will go, they will oversee, they are not using dirty needles, they're not sharing their needles, or sharing their caps, they're sharing their cottons, which promote infections. The infection I fought, I fought for two years, and I almost lost my arm three times in two years. Why? Because I kept doing the drugs. And then when I got clean, I continued for another year to fight, even after being clean and not using drugs any longer, because that infection was in my bone. Why? I didn't let people use my needles, but I did let somebody use my cotton. Why? Because I lived on the streets of Seattle, living and sleeping in dirty alleys with feces, dog feces, human feces, dirt, I mean, whatever there was. And I lived in Queen Anne, and I had a beautiful home, and I had a great job, and I'd owned two businesses. So it wasn't from my neglect, it was from stuff I'd went through. I lost my son and never got the correct treatment, you know, the mental health treatment that was needed, so, thank you.
Thank you, Tarina.
My name is Jane Cutter. Thank you, Council, by the way. My name is Jane Cutter. I live in Sea-Tac at 182 1936 Avenue South, and I'm a person in long-term recovery from substance abuse disorder. That means that for more than 31 years, I have not taken or used any recreational drugs or drinking any alcohol. In the time that I have been in recovery, I have regained the respect of my family and community. I have completed my college education and earned two advanced degrees, including a PhD, started a family, have had a successful career, became a homeowner, am starting a small business, I'm involved in my community as an activist for social justice, and I have even run a marathon. That's the laugh line there, guys. My life has value. When I was active in my disease, I engaged in a lot of dangerous and risky behavior. Fortunately, I survived long enough to reach out and get the help and get sober. This is why I support safe consumption sites, because the lives of people with substance abuse disorders have value. If we can keep our family and friends alive long enough for them to get help, we can save them, they can get into treatment. And I oppose the false dichotomy of opposing treatment against safe consumption sites. The two things have to work hand in glove with each other, and this is not, this should not be a limited pie where the money we spend on one is taken away from the other. We have to do both. Thank you very much. Safe consumption sites do save lives.
Thank you, Jane. JS Pate?
Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak here. My name is JS Pate. Actually, I was James Stephen, but I always go for JS. My address is 10825 Southeast 232nd Street here in Kent. Mr. Barrios is very familiar with that area. Anyways, I've lived in Kent for 39 years, and I've loved the way the city has grown in diversity and people are coming in. What I do not love is watching neighborhoods become increasingly unsafe. While I am a person who does really want to have compassion upon people, my first 10 years of life was raised on an Navajo Indian reservation in Arizona. I watched alcohol become exceedingly destructive, generations upon generations, because people accepted that type of behavior, accepted the things of allowing people to make money on it. Drugs, we started with marijuana here, and we're watching increased usage up and down recreationally. My daughter started a police career here in Kent, I'm happy to say. She's still a police officer after 14 years. Sorry to say it's not here in Kent, she's moved away from my area, but she has already acknowledged many times what I already knew. Marijuana is a beginning drug. The fact that people coming into heroin, I am concerned for them. But its needs, as another gentleman stated here, we need facilities to help them get off of. Those are facilities for people living on streets, to come to and live and take care of them. I have worked in jails here, go in and minister to people. The number of young youth that have been sold, the line that, "Do your own thing," is great until 18, and then we want to throw away the key on them. The fact is, is enabling an environment that says, "Drugs are okay. Drugs are here because we support this. We're giving you a facility to deal with." The fact is, is the drug dealers and the places coming in from out of place makes this city unsafe.
Thank you, JS. Following, Patricia's our next speaker. Following Patricia, I see Heather, looks like Oslin, Haley Higgins, Francesca Collins, and TJ Peterson.
Hi, my name is Patricia Sully, and I'm a staff attorney for the Public Defender Association. I was also a member of the King County Heroin, Opiate, and Addiction Task Force. And I just want to speak to sort of the structure of those recommendations that came out of the task force. The task force recommendations are separated into three different categories: prevention, drug user health, and treatment. And those should really be viewed as a continuum of care and a comprehensive package, not a buffet to pick and choose from, but really a way to create a wraparound system. We all hope that no one ever starts to struggle with substance use disorder, and that's why we're really focused on prevention. And the second someone does start to struggle with substance use disorder, we want to be able to connect them to treatment. And that's why we really put as much treatment and treatment on demand into those recommendations as we could. But when prevention has failed and treatment is not yet sought or available, we have to keep people alive. Someone who dies never has the opportunity to recover. For someone to make it to the place where they're able to access buprenorphine, able to access inpatient, they have to stay alive and healthy. Supervised consumption spaces enable people to be a little bit healthier and a little bit safer where they are. What the science shows us is that supervised consumption spaces do work. They do help connect people to treatment services, and they do reduce outdoor drug use and fatal overdose. That's an important thing. It's also important to recognize that treatment is not a magic cure-all, that is sort of a one-shot cure. Substance use disorder is a chronic relapsing disease, and so people often struggle with relapse. This is completely normal, it's to be expected, and we need to have a safety net to catch them. When someone relapses, it's often where we see a fatal overdose, because that person experiences tremendous shame and stigma when that relapse occurs, and so they go to the least safe place possible. They hide, they don't tell their family, they don't tell their support network, and rather they go to an alley or a bathroom they used at the level they had been using prior to stopping their drug use, and they suffer an overdose. Supervised consumption spaces provide a safety net. They provide a place where that person experiencing a relapse can go, knowing that they won't be judged, where they can feel like they're not going to experience stigma, and where they can get connected to care again. Thank you.
Thank you. And Patricia, you state you do live in Seattle.
I live in Tacoma, Washington.
Oh, Tacoma. Thank you. All right, Heather?
Good evening. My name is Heather Russell. I'm a resident of Kent. I live at 10816 Southeast 235th Street, and I'm here to talk about the safe injection sites. I am against it. I don't think that we should be enabling drug addicts. I think the solution is to get them in rehab and invest the money in detox. The city of Kent has said, "We don't want marijuana in our city of Kent, so why are we going to allow safe injection sites?" I have two children, one that's 17 and one that's eight, and I feel like if we start with safe injection sites, what's the next thing going to be? What are we going to allow next after that? Say no to safe injection sites. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Haley Higgins?
Hello, my name is Haley. My address is 12841 Southeast 242nd Court, Kent, Washington. I am a senior at the University of Washington studying public health and Spanish. Within the School of Public Health, we directly study how the benefits of safe injection sites outweigh the negatives. Safe injection sites are centered on harm reduction process to address this country's serious opioid epidemic. It is based on the idea that we accept people consume substances and therefore aim to reduce the negative consequences of use, such as death. I would like to highlight a few statistics. Federal evaluations of a very similar syringe exchange program showed that they do not increase drug abuse. They served as a bridge to drug abuse treatments and were not associated with increased crime. There are over 100 supervised consumption spaces in the globe in 66 cities, nine countries, for over 30 years. According to numerous peer-reviewed scientific studies and Supervised Consumption Site Coalition, they reduce public disorder, reduce public injecting, increase public safety. They successfully manage overdoses and reduce overdose death. They do not increase community drug use initiation into injection drug use or drug-related crime. A decision this grave demands patience, education, and time. Statistics show that we are in the midst of an opioid epidemic, and we cannot sit back and ignore it and attempt to protect our city. A vote against supervised consumption space is a direct step away from achieving health and safety for our people here in Kent. Thank you.
Francesca Collins?
Hi, good evening. My name is Francesca Collins. Thank you for having me and listening to my public comment. I think so many folks have done a great job of addressing the pros of safe consumption site, and I'm also here to support the safe consumption.
And you live where?
I live in the Green Lake community of Seattle, Washington. And while I am not a Kent resident, and I have no place in telling what the Kent residents, you know, to do with their city, I am an advocate for public health, and I do believe in advocating for the health needs of all the people. And I want to say, as someone who has dealt with substances on a personal, professional, and academic level, I do believe that safe consumption spaces can overhaul the way that we think and treat substance use disorder. For the individual, on the individual level, I have supervised a syringe exchange site in the past, and I have had community members every day expressing to me that they wish that they had a safer place to use so that they wouldn't have to worry about sharing their works with other people, or knowing that they would have a safe place to turn to in case they were feeling the symptoms or onset of an overdose. I know that the, I know substance use disorder can also have an effect on families, and I believe that safe consumption spaces can help provide support to substance use, those folks using substances by way of providing them with programs and services like other folks have mentioned. And I also think that the support of safe consumption spaces can support a community as a whole by reducing infections like HIV and hepatitis C and other wounds, by offering that attention and care at safe consumption spaces. That is all I have prepared. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Following TJ's testimony, we have Gwen Allen Carsten and Mary Love. TJ?
Thank you, Mary Cook, Council President, Council members. I'm not all that smart. I've been on the streets of Kent for 10 years. Lost a lot of friends to drugs, crime. Let me tell you about Darwin Demenski Jr., my sister's youngest boy. 10-year addiction after he got hurt at work. Doctor gave him Vicodins, da-da-da-da-da. Y'all know where it goes. Two days after Christmas, this past Christmas 2016, they found him unconscious in the basement. My older brother and my sister did 30 minutes of CPR on my nephew. I have a dog in this fight. Harm reduction, it's very important. These are lives we're talking about, brothers, sisters, kids. My concern is Kent, the city that I love, is not ready for this. They don't have the infrastructure for the people we have on the streets now with mental illness. They don't have the police to deal with the crime that we're dealing with right now. We've had a lot of problems in the last 10 years. There's some factions in the city that are undermining our city, starving it of money. Thank you all for coming out and paying attention. I know you care. I don't think this is a good time for Kent right now. We have a methadone clinic, we have all kinds of problems. We need to get on top of some other things before we move forward. I expect the Council to say no on this, but I think we need to hold them accountable to come up with solutions to the problems we have today. That's our job. We can beat this. This is a six-month moratorium, I believe. We need to talk about this. We need to talk about this every day for the next six months, and we need to start moving forward. We have people that have investigated navigation centers, we have property, the county, the state will step up for money if Kent will host. That's all we have to do. And we have the workers and the knowledge and the passion and the people that love that will fix this. Thank you all for coming and talking, but I just don't think our city's ready for it right now. But we can, and we got this. Thank you.
Gwen Allen Carsten. And I might announce, I think we're changing subjects, but maybe not, based on your sign-in sheet.
Well, my name is Gwen Allen Carsten. I am the Executive Director for Kent Black Action Commission, and I'm also a business owner up on East Hill and homeowner up on owner up on East Hill and homeowner up on East Hill, 24914, 109th Place Southeast. And I tend to agree with a lot of the statements about the safe injection site. I disagree with it, and I'll leave it at that for now. However, I did come with an announcement and a request tonight. On August 26, 2017, from 10 to 2 o'clock in the afternoon at Burlington Green Park, Kent Black Action Commission will be having a tribute to the March on Washington. This year is the 54th anniversary of the historic March on Washington DC. If anybody can remember, this is the time that Martin Luther King gave his famous "I Have a Dream" speech. And there are other speeches which he gave, and we will be hosting this event in the park on the 26th. Everyone is invited to attend this, and we hope that folks will come out, especially given this climate that we find ourselves in today and with the most recent actions and horrific tragedy that happened at the demonstrations in North Carolina, I think it was Charlottesville, Virginia, I'm sorry. And we need to show a stand for safety, for standing against ignorance when it comes to hate and crimes thereof. Each one of us needs to stand and say whether you agree or disagree. I disagree with hate. I don't hate anyone. I hate rude and ignorant behaviors, but I do not hate the person. And I ask that we do, each one of us, do all that we can to subside and get rid of hate. And I would go further to say that if you have, you know people who are like this, please have them to stop this madness. The last thing I want to do is pass these out to each member of the dais and ask that as you are going towards being our mayor and our city council members for this coming year, that you remember that there is a constitution to the United States of America, and you are held accountable to it because you will be our leaders. So I ask that you keep this in your pocket. I will be handing them out. If anybody wants them, you can find them up at C&amp;G Hair and Beauty Supply, and I welcome your conversations. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gwen. Councilmember Ralph?
Gwen, can you say the date and time one more time? Please?
The event will be held at Burlington Green Park, that's the park over here by the gazebo across the railroads, on August 26, which is Saturday, from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. We will be there, we will have light refreshments, we will have speakers, we will have some entertainment, and you can step up to the mic and reclaim your time. How about that?
Always entertaining. And informative. Is it Mari?
Thank you. Good evening, council members, Madam Mayor. My name is Mari Love. I live on East Hill. My address is 10822 Southeast 235th Street. My original intention was just to come down here and see what was happening. I was not really going to say anything. But, listening to the officer up here, I do have a comment. I'm greatly concerned about the police shootings in the black community. I am a mother, I am a grandmother, I'm a great-grandmother. And I want more accountability. I don't know why we don't have police cams or vehicle cams. I don't understand why there isn't more accountability, and that's what I want to talk about, and that's what I'm putting to the council members. Why don't we have that? Thank you.
Thank you, Mari. That concludes those that have signed up for public comment. So, we move on now to the consent calendar. Council President Voish, do you have a motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar, item A through I. Second?
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Who's opposed? Motion carries. Other business, Kurt Hansen, front and center. This presentation is on the Riverbend Golf Complex, known as Marquee on Meeker. This is the development agreement that the council has before it tonight.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Long time coming, as the mayor introduced. This is the Marquee on Meeker Development Agreement Discussion. Pretty brief presentation, opportunity for Q&amp;A, for sure. On the timeline right up there on the screen, you can see, it's been a long road. Really, won't focus on each one of those bullets because it'll cover a few years. Highlighting the last two, we had our public hearing on the development agreement June 18th, so last month. Went through in pretty good detail the elements of the development agreement itself. This evening, before you, is council consideration of that development agreement. Going to walk through some of the steps, give a little bit of background as we go through. The Marquee on Meeker Development is on the screen there. It's a very attractive project on the Riverbend Golf Course property, the Par III Riverbend Gateway Site. It's going to consist of two podium-constructed buildings, 120 units apiece, 12,000 square feet of commercial development. It's 21, 12-unit, they're urban quad concept, as you transition to the river on the south end of the development. There's the site plan, it's going to be a little bit tough to see on the screen, but I just wanted to walk you through some of the basic points here. So you can see what I was mentioning about the urban quads, and the south end is the bottom of the screen if you will, along the river. The development was designed in such a way that it maintains that the visibility and the viewpoints through, whether you're on the trail looking north, or if you're on the north looking south, over the trail and through the mountain. Very deliberate design, it retains a lot of that public element. There's a large swath on the south end that travels along the river there. You can see in the Green River Trail, there's a 200-foot setback there, to the very south end of those urban quads that are there. Within that 200-foot setback, it preserves in perpetuity the public's ability to recreate, to use the trail, to step off the trail, and basically use that as you do today. Project phasing for this development. Same site plan, this time the demarcation, kind of that red dotted line through the center of the site. West is to the left, as you're looking at the screen. Phase 1 will be on the west side. It'll consist of the podium-constructed building, and then it'll have 14 of the urban quads as a part of Phase 1. Phase 2 will have the other podium building, and then seven of the urban quads on the east side of the red dotted line. I wanted to point out something that's really important to this development agreement, and really, the development agreement is framed around this concept. The red line is the phasing line. The trail, that kind of north-south split, if you will, between the center of the site, that will be a public trail that splits the site in two, in between the two phases. That trail will be developed as a part of the Phase 1, as well as all of the Meet Me on Meeker frontage improvements on the north side of the site. I want to move back one slide to point out something. The Meet Me on Meeker improvements along Meeker Street there, on the north side of the site, this site plan, that is in your packet, it's in the development agreement, it shows all of Meet Me on Meeker's, you know, kind of finished plans, if you will. I want to point out to the council, make it very clear, that the development team and what's negotiated through this development agreement will be, the developer will construct the south side of all of those improvements. It's 1,135 feet from the west to the east. It will include everything on the south side, we'll get into that more, and I'll show you some photographs. It will include the center medians that are hard to see, but in your packet and on the slide. What it will not do, and this image is a little, you know, it's a little deceiving, not intentionally, but it shows the Meet Me on Meeker plan constructed on the north side as well. So if you envision the 18-hole golf course, it shows parallel parking and then the curved bulbouts on the north side of the street. That won't be done as a part of this project. Everything else will, you know, all of the south end improvements, south side improvements, the medians, the crosswalks, everything else will be done. We can talk more about that in a moment, I just wanted to make that clear. Okay, the development agreement, what is it? It's authorized by state statute. Essentially, it's a vesting agreement. It's going to provide clarity and security to both sides, the developer and, in our case, the regulator of the city. Term will be for 10 years, it applies for the entire project, and again, it confirms those expectations for both parties. A little bit of background, the purchase-sale agreement came before council in June, mid-June, that was approved through council. That purchase and sale agreement has a series of contingencies, much like when you buy a house or a property, you have to satisfy those contingencies. They're listed, there's four of them, five of them. The developer has to submit earnest money, half a million dollars, that's done. The SEPA needed to be complete, the shoreline substantial development needed to be approved, and of course, this evening, the city approval of the development agreement is one of those contingencies. We have the public hearing, July 18th, we're here tonight for consideration of the development agreement. We're going to walk through more of those. There's a short plat that was approved in May that established the lots. Currently, today, there's one large lot for all of the golf course facility, the driving range, the merchandise store, the putt-putt, and the Par III site itself, it's all one lot. We had to do a short plat to create lots to sell. So that's done, we've done that, that was approved in May. A little more background on that, is five lots were created that will be attributed to the Marquee on Meeker site. The city of Kent created three additional lots, a total of eight, through the short plat process. So the Parks Department could retain three lots and kind of move or tweak those lot lines as we see fit going into the future. Declaration of Non-Significance was issued at the end of June, that's the SEPA process, and the shoreline management act, or really, the shoreline management permit was issued, I think it was on the 10th, so last week. We mentioned the development agreement, powerful tool for vesting, really giving certainty to both sides of negotiation. In this case, a super relevant piece of the development agreement, of course, is vesting to certain charges. So, they are vested to the water system development charge, you can see the fee up there, it's That fee will be split between the two phases, so half with Phase 1, half with Phase 2. You'll see the little sub-bullet there, they are not vested to the monthly utility rates. So the city raises it next year, or the year after, or every year thereafter, they will pay that increase, I guess it could decrease, but they will pay that new utility rate. Storm drainage fees, the fee is calculated there, you'll see, that's an estimate, $395,000. That estimate is based on city's standard today, that 88 cents a square foot for impervious runoff that would find its way into the public system, and then it also has a rate of 44 cents a square foot for any stormwater that infiltrates and then finds its way into the public system. You can see the estimate there, the estimate is because through the civil designer view process, when they come in with their civil permits, we're going to have exact calculations for the amount of square footage. They're vested to the 2002 Surface Water Design Manual. That sounds like, you know, they vested a long time ago. Reality is, we've been using the 2002 manual until just after Christmas of 2016. The new manual came into effect essentially this year. They came in with a vested application, meaning the SEPA and the short plat came in together with their civil development permit, therefore vesting them to the manual in effect at the time, which is the 2002 Surface Water Design Manual. Design standards, so in your packet, we spent a lot of time with council and with the community on this element, right? So, the exterior finishes, there will be attachments in your packet, as well as the interior finishes, which is unique in this instance. We set out essentially a set of minimum standards. We had them provide us pretty far along designs on what the elevations would be, and then we included those in the development agreement to hold them to that standard. What's important, if you go back to Slide 2 or maybe Slide 3, I said the term is for 10 years. You know, this development team, we have no reason to doubt them. If they were to, for some reason, this changes hands. This development agreement is attached to the land going forward. Whoever, if there was to be another team, they're held to that same standard. You know, again, no one anticipates that, but I just wanted to talk about the effectiveness of this agreement. It says, "Still subject to further modification under city's designer view." We are in the process of doing the designer view right now. There are buildings that are not shown in your packet, for instance, the Community Center, there's one. So, you know, that will be subject to the same design standards. We're going through that now. Again, we've set the floor. The minimum standards are going to be shown in your application, or, I'm sorry, in your packet. I just wanted you to know, we're still kind of going through that exercise. Transportation impact fee, so this is, you know, we had a lot of conversations on this one. The total transportation impact fee due for the project is $761,000. The city agrees that the developer's construction of the Meet Me on Meeker improvements serves the goals and objectives of the capital facilities plan and qualifies for impact credit under Kent City Code. A portion of the cost of the Meet Me on Meeker improvements shall be offset by a TIF credit in the amount of $500,000. Specifically, the city agrees that the TIF, the traffic impact fee credit of $500,000, is in consideration of those Meet Me on Meeker improvements that would apply to reduce the cost of future construction of what's identified in the current Transportation Master Plan's TIF project list. You guys have heard us talk about W-12. So, again, that statement, "The city agrees that the TIF credit of a half a million dollars is in consideration of the Meet Me on Meeker improvements that would apply to reduce the cost of future construction of Project W-12 on the city's TIF project list." That, it's, you know, that's a tough concept, but we negotiated long and hard on that. The project proponent is going to develop the Meet Me on Meeker frontage improvements. It's a, it's something that our department and Economic Community Development and Public Works have been working on for a long time, and the Meet Me on Meeker standards are making their way through the public process. Lots of community outreach, one-on-ones of the businesses in and along Meeker, as well as community surveys. Developing the Meet Me on Meeker improvements here on this 20-plus acre site at 1,135 feet of frontage was very strategic, and out of necessity, we are implementing this plan through the development agreement. The Meet Me on Meeker standards, as they progress, will be starting to make their way through the council committees, I think it's next month. And so, you know, stay tuned on that one. This was a great opportunity to really advance that program on a 24-acre site. Okay, so, I mentioned the public pathway, that's through the center of the site. Each party's going to need to grant easements or licenses as a part of this development agreement. Very first one, public pedestrian trail that connects Meeker Street to the Green River Trail. We need a public easement, so the public can enjoy the benefits of using that trail, parking along Meeker, dining, and then making their way to the trail. It's a dramatic improvement. It's a great way to introduce people that either have not been to or have enjoyed it for years, using that piece of our community. In turn, we will need to grant licenses to F&amp;W, the development team, to maintain the Meeker Street improvements, as well as allow, you can see there, parking stall, landscaping, et cetera, within the right-of-way. So on that south end of the Meet Me on Meeker improvements along their frontage, there's a portion of the right-of-way that extends south onto the site where they, the developer, will have some improvements, landscaping. Literally, I think it's two feet of a head-in parking stall. The way for us to do that is to issue a license within the city's right-of-way. We've done it before, it's not super unusual, that's what this is capturing. So, there it is, there's the Marquee on Meeker as seen from a future Meet Me on Meeker right-of-way, and the new improvement looking east along the site. the new improvement looking east along the site. There were a few things that we talked about that have come up in the past, and I think it's worthy of discussion here. I'm going to touch on one of them, and that was the retail component. There was a lot of discussion during the public hearing on July 18th about this issue. And I just want to state or restate for the record so it's a little more clear. That's my goal, anyway. The developers requested a departure from the Kent City Code, which requires that at least 5% of the gross floor area of the mixed-use development in the general commercial mixed-use zone must be permitted commercial use. As proposed, approximately 2.5% of the project will consist of a commercial retail use. Again, as authorized by statute through the development agreement process, the city has determined that a public benefit of equal or greater value than that derived from the additional commercial retail development, meeting the 5% standard, will be achieved instead by including the following elements in the project. There's three things that we negotiated. First one is construction and completion of all of the Meet Me on Meeker frontage improvements along the project's entire frontage as a part of the very first stage or phase of the development. The second one, developers shall be solely responsible to maintain all landscaped areas within the project's Meet Me on Meeker frontage from the back of the new Meet Me on Meeker curb line to the project property line and the parking and public area edges plus crosswalk medians within the adjacent Meeker Street right-of-way. I'll go back to that in a second. The third, developers shall construct and shall maintain their required facilities providing public access to the Green River Trail of a design and a quality that meets or exceeds Kent City Code minimum standards and visually enhances nearby public areas. Those are the three things that we used to justify the departure. Now, those are, you know, we're allowed to do that by state statute when you have a development agreement. The second one is of particular relevance and importance because it covers a lot of ongoing, you know, cost and perpetuity to the city. And in this case, we've deferred and relegated that to the developer. Any irrigation, any landscaping, any weeding, any maintaining of those planter beds, you know, routine maintenance, washing, those are now the responsibility of the developer going forward in the medians, outside of the crosswalks, and in that area. So a key piece for us was looking at that equity standpoint. That's the one, as soon as we agreed and negotiated that element, that's when we knew we would be able to get that. Back to the retail element. This was the 5% versus the 2.5%. We sent out RFPs, a request for proposals, to the marketplace, national request. When F&amp;W Landmark submitted their proposal, day one, they came in with 2.5% or 12,000 square feet of commercial space. That has not changed from the moment it came in the door to tonight. That amount has stayed the same. Also, you're economic development guy, and so looking at the marketplace at this end of the Meeker Street development, I think this exchange, the way it's written in the development agreement, is exactly what we need to do at this location. The 12,000 feet, I wish them luck. I will help them when it comes to soliciting interest and getting interest there. That it's going to be a lift. That's a big lift. They're going to be able to have some success because of the design and all of the improvements that really, they beckon people. This is going to be a shining light on that part of our community right now that needs this investment. I think with that, I should step away and ask if there's any questions. I will say, the development team is here this evening. Tim LaPorte is here as well, if you have additional questions.
Thank you, Kurt. Do we have any questions of staff on this proposal? We begin with Councilmember Boudel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's the first time I've jumped in first. Kurt, my question last night about energy efficiency has, did we get a response, gentlemen? My question to you is, in this development, aside from energy-efficient appliances and LED lighting, are you going to do anything to help reduce carbon footprints? There are some developments, I know in Northern California, that are using solar lighting for passive lighting in the evenings, wind turbine for the same effect. Is there any water reclamation, anything aside from the standard, energy-efficient stuff that you guys are potentially thinking about putting in this development?
Madam Mayor, council, thank you for letting us be here tonight. To answer your question...
You want to introduce yourself to the public that doesn't know you?
...with F&amp;W Landmark Development. So we do have the standard LED and light savings, energy code-related issues. Up until now, there has not been, in the Northwest, efficient ways for us to utilize photo cells and those kind of things. In the event that we can, we will, but it has to be efficient for us and cost-efficient as well, so.
Any other questions of staff? Councilmember Barrios.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, I think we've had an opportunity to go through this process, and I really appreciate the process that we've gone through with staff and making sure that we've been given the opportunity to ask the necessary questions to really feel good about making a sound decision. And besides that, after our July, and it was actually July 18th meeting, not June, our July 18th meeting, I needed to see for myself as to, really, what are we looking at long-term here? Because that's the key. We're going to have to live with this project for a long time. And I set up a meeting with John McKenna, who happens to be in the room today. And I toured the facility at the TREC in Auburn. And, you know, I have some experience in touring facilities in my past, and I could tell what a dog and pony show looks like. But I could tell you that after spending nearly two hours, at least two hours, with John and, I don't know what his title is, but the gentleman that oversees your facilities, I was really truly impressed with the quality of work that went into this project. And also, the extent that there seems to be a feeling of ownership on this project as far as that property is concerned. As a matter of fact, John had, John McKenna has shared with me that him and his wife actually spend the night at that facility periodically.
Councilmember Barrios, do you have a question?
Yes, yes, yes. So I do have a question. But I just wanted to share that it was a good experience. I had the opportunity to see some comments made by the residents, and it was obvious that we had people that would validate that there's the ownership, they appreciate the ownership of this particular project at the TREC. And I'm hoping that that would be the case here in Kent. My concern, and I addressed this yesterday, with this particular project is as we look at the multi-tax exemption that we're giving on this, I need to make sure that we're real clear of what this means in terms of what we're getting now in terms of property tax and what this would mean down the road. And this is the eight-year?
That's correct. If I may, I'll do my best here. So the multifamily property tax exemption is a state-authorized tool that cities may or may not adopt at their own will. The city, there's actually, there's two options that cities can adopt. There's an eight and a 12-year program. The city of Kent only adopted the eight-year program, which is for a market-rate product. The 12-year abatement program is if you have an element of affordable, you know, percentage of AMI housing as a part of the project. So the city of Kent, for numerous reasons, only selected the eight-year option to make available. They'll say, we have the, or I'm sorry, we adopted that. This is our second go with this program. It actually sunsets in 2019. The developer can make an application. It's called a conditional certificate. The conditional certificate is made, is submitted, quite frankly, to staff. At the staff level, it's just an application. It's submitted, and then the council will actually hear that. Tom, if you have the date, I would love that, when that would come in. But that'll be submitted to council for consideration. Essentially, what it will do, sorry, Tom, while you think.
Well, there's no specific date yet, but the developer, F&amp;W Landmark, has indicated they want to submit it before the end of the year. It'll probably come in in November or very early December.
What that program would allow is an eight-year abatement on any of the improvements associated with the residential product. This is a mixed-use development. There's 12,000 square feet of commercial space that would be included, the whole project, not in the plaza. A little bit of background. So it's in public ownership today. It's a golf course. There is no tax being generated on that site today. There are no property taxes coming in. The minute it is held privately, so even if the development doesn't happen, as soon as F&amp;W takes ownership of that property, it's now privately held and property tax will start being generated. So today, there's nothing coming in. Tomorrow, if the deal is done and F&amp;W owns the land, they will be taxed on the value of that property. That'll be on the tax rolls. Spinning ahead, as soon as the development comes in and the improvements are constructed, the site starts going vertical, two things. First of all, the property is worth more because now you've approved it, improved it. The second thing is, any of the, any of the value associated with the commercial development, the commercial aspect of the mixed-use development, is also taxed and is also taxable, I should have said. So the improvements associated with the commercial development, that's taxed at the county's mill rate. And again, you guys understand tax assessment. They are not, they're not future-tellers, they're historians. So once the values come up, once the developments are there, the taxes are raised, and then that's, you know, we'll have income coming in on that. Eight years plus one day from now, you know, if this development goes through, the idea is, this would not happen but for the incentive. With the incentive now, we're going to have, I'm just going to say, a $100 million-plus dollar development there, probably significant north of that, that will be developed there. So eight years and one day from now, we have $100 million-plus of a development that'll be taxed. I hope I helped there.
Well, you did help. And that's why I was giving the story about why I went down there, because I needed to understand what we're going to be looking at eight years and one day in the future in terms of the quality, because part of the conditions is that we're looking at a market-rate product. And based on what I saw in this particular project, I am convinced that that's what we will get.
Councilmember Thomas.
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to vote for this, but I want to go over some things to make sure in my own mind. You mentioned during your earlier discussion about possible development on the north side of Meeker Street, which is the golf course and...
I'm sorry if I said it that way. What I meant...
No, it's okay. I just, I want to understand a little...
Sure.
...what you have in mind, and is there any kind of timeframe at this point?
Councilmember, what I was trying to point out, and actually, this image tells the story a little better. The Meet Me on Meeker improvements, the site plan shows it, the color version of that, the yellow and green version, shows those bulb-outs and the improvements on the north side, meaning the 18-hole side of the street.
Right.
Those will, those improvements would not be done with this development.
I understand that.
That's really all I meant. No future development on our behalf. The golf course isn't going anywhere.
Okay.
I didn't mean to say that.
Yeah, because I was confused on that one, because actually, that would actually be good in some ways.
Sure.
Not for the golf course. Retail space was 5% standard as proposed. It's 2.5% that's been brought forward. When I looked at your drawings here, it looks like there's only spots for two retail spaces in each one of the pods, those large, is that correct?
That's correct.
Oh, 3,000...
Six in each.
Six in each.
Yeah.
Two spots.
Just a note. That's correct. 12,000 feet total, 2.5%.
Five by four.
What the request was. I will say, on the east side of the development, you can see in the site plan there, there's a parking lot. The zoning is general commercial mixed-use. Commercial uses are allowed outright in the general commercial mixed-use zoning by rights. So this development, going forward, we hope to all celebrate this fabulous market turn where retail is in favor again and everybody wants to build more. I'm just saying, they have the ability to build a standalone commercial space right in that pocket in the top-right corner against the...
Oh, okay.
They could build more if there's a market.
Right, right.
Nothing holding them back.
Sure. Okay, so in these projected, I'm a former retailer, as you know, so Kurt, you've got, looks like, two parking spaces for each retail space?
Two parking spaces.
In front of, it looks like?
Oh, well, there's a lot of opportunity. So this on the front, and again, the scale isn't helping us here, Councilmember.
Not at all.
I guess I'll stand back and just talk about the site for a moment. So the site has 700 and stalls in total.
Right, right.
There's 492 apartments planned, total development. 12,000 square feet of retail. The retail, and quite frankly, the parking was designed very deliberately for the very thing that I think you're getting at. Accessibility to, I'll say, national tenants is the very first question for parking. Where's my parking? Where is my space? Can I see it? Does it make sense? Is there logic there? In the front, on the north side of that site, Councilmember, I'll see if I can do it with the...
Go on the north side again.
Yep, so on the north side, if you can see the cursor there, there are parking stalls built in this area right here.
Correct.
There are parking stalls with Meet Me on Meeker improvements all the way along the 1,100 feet of the new frontage. There were parallel parking stalls along this street frontage, right here. All of these are very logical for a retailer to capitalize on, you know, get that market there. Those are, that's really the design of this project, is to make it readily accessible and visible to a prospective patron.
Kurt, how many cars do you own?
I own two.
And you've only allowed one car per unit? One parking space per unit?
Yeah.
1.6?
1.5, I think, yeah.
So your car is a half a car. Okay. No, so you've got 746 parking spaces. You've got all these units, one per stall, and now the rest could be used for overflow of other tenants. It's available to the public, but also to potential retail people. So I'm struggling with that one as a retailer. I just, you know, I heard this all the time in Kent downtown, there's no parking, there's no parking. Well, there is parking, you just got to know where to look. But I'm afraid we might hear some of those few or same comments years down the road. Okay, another point, Meeker Street will remain two lanes.
That's correct.
Okay. I think that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Ralph.
Thank you, Your Honor. Kurt, one question that just came to mind there with Councilmember Thomas's questioning. The parking along Meeker, will that have a two-hour parking requirement? There's, I'm thinking specifically, I happen to drive through Maple Valley today. There's a large apartment complex where there's clearly...
I know, I'm from Maple Valley.
I knew you would know exactly, right? There's clearly not enough parking so that that whole side of the street is parked with people from the complex. Are we going to make sure that that parking on Meeker is maintained for the retail space or will it turn into overflow parking for the development?
I think you are on the precipice of a great idea that we need to talk about at the policy level. So we have not talked about that. I will say the 740, 50 stalls there, that is not inclusive, of course, of the public parking within the Meeker Street right-of-way. So, great point, and I think that warrants more discussion.
I would greatly appreciate that, extra discussion.
Any other questions of staff? Council President Boyce, do you have a motion?
Yes, I do, Madam Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the Riverbend Complex Marquis on Meeker development agreement. on Meeker Development Agreement, subject to final terms and condition acceptable to the city attorney.
A second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Councilmember Ralph, followed by Higgins.
Can I speak to the motion?
Oh, I am, I apologize, of course. Council President Boyce.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I wanna say, you know, we have been on a long journey for, looking at what to do with the Par Three. Councilmember Ralph and I came when it came out in 2012, and that was, one of the things we was talking about, is the golf complex funding. And we had looked at numerous of things, numerous of ways of trying to find to make it work for the golf complex. After we realized that it couldn't work, we decided to put this out to bid. We got quite a few offers, and then F&amp;W came out on the top. Councilman Ralph, myself, and Councilman McGinn represented the city council as we went through this whole process and making sure that things that we thought was important to the council was addressed throughout this year of process. I wanna say, F&amp;W, I think they have done a fabulous job of representing themselves and who they are, and what they're all about. Stated before, John, Liv, and, and was born in Kent, and used to ride his bike on Meeker Street, so, I mean, he's very passionate about what's happened here into the city of Kent. You know, and this is a tough decision. You know, I can go back, and I said this before, to Councilmember Thomas at the time, because I can recall Showware, you know, when we first put Showware in, and my kids used to play on that soccer field. I used to take my little one-year-old baby, we used to walk around that trail, and when they brought Showware in, I was very upset, very upset. Same thing with Kent Station, Boarding Field, played many, many baseball games with my kids, that's where they played baseball in Kent. And, and now we have the Kent Station. And you look back then, and look at now, good visionary, you know? I mean, we are paying it forward, you know, and people still have questions about the Showware, but you look at so many events, and I was just on their website today, Galena and her family came down for an event at Showware and talked about how easy it would get to. The parking was great, the food was great at the Kent Station, and she just said, kudos, good for Kent. Now, I look at this year complex that we're gonna put up there, which I think, in my opinion, is, is the state of art. I hope, seven years from now, you know, they'll look at it and say, hey, this council made the right decision. This is good for the city of Kent. I will also say, you know, I have to go see it for myself, so, Councilmember Ralph and I went down to the track in Auburn and had a nice tour, and we really liked what we saw down there, really liked, and I think that really took me over the edge. So, I am very excited about this project. I'm very excited to make the motion. I'm very excited to be in support of this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilmember Ralph, followed by Higgins.
Thank you, Your Honor. So, I'm gonna start out with some of my frustrations on this project. These are not anything new that I have not expressed before. I am, I'm struggling with the way that this project has, it feels a lot like cart before the horse. We talked a long time about selling the property, were, were led to believe no other options available, there were options available. Granted, they came very late in the game, and I'm frustrated that it took us that long to get there, but that's why I voted no on the project, because there were options available. We are providing a credit in this plan, in this development agreement, for Meet Me on Meeker, and I think that the pictures that we have are great, but we don't have a standard. We're, we're, we're hoping that we get there, we're hoping that we've communicated, but the standard is, does not exist at this point. So, again, I feel like it's cart before the horse. We sold the project and then identified a $3 million drainage project that needed to be done. I'm, I'm concerned with the fact that we didn't have that discussion in the first year, or the second year, or the third year, or the fourth year, we talked about selling this property. We have made an exception on the retail standard, and I am in complete agreement, but my frustration is, we have a standard that we continue to make exceptions to. So, I have made a request of Council President Boyce and Economic Development that we, that we take some time to look at the standard. Not, not saying that this exception's not appropriate, but maybe we need to look at a different standard. So, all that being said, I did vote no on this, but once, once the will of this council to sell the property became reality, then my job became making sure that this was the best project that we could get. And, as Council President Boyce said, I was part of that selection committee. There was no question in my mind through that process that F&amp;W was the only project that we looked at, that met the standards that we had set. There was a passion from the entire team about the city of Kent, that's what drew me in. I will tell you, when I hear somebody say, "I love Kent," it hits really close to home, and it makes me smile, and I got that out of the entire team, through the entire process. We went down and toured the facility with one of our local business owners, and we were all blown away. The whole conversation, all the way home, was, this is a quality project. I do believe that our, that our staff, our economic development and legal teams have done everything they can to make sure this agreement helps us meet that standard. We sat through a couple-hour meeting the other day, and I may have made the comment about being cynical, and there was not a single person in the room that did not nod their head and agree with that statement. But you know what? That's my job, right? We, we get to this point, and now my job is to make sure that, that we are, that we're covering all of our bases. I wanted to confirm that that 200 feet of space, that that couldn't become a frustration for the residents because of activity on the trail, and that we lose that. There were all those kinds of things that we talked about. So, all of that history and all of those things going forward, I, I am convinced that this agreement is the best thing we can come to on this project, that it does ensure a quality development that we will be able to look to in the future as, as setting a new standard in the city of Kent. I'm sad that our golf course is gone, but I can absolutely look people in the eye and say, if this is what we're, we're choosing to do with this property, there's nothing better than we can do. So, I am grateful for that, and, and thankful to staff, and thank you to F&amp;W and the whole entire team for, for working us through this process, and for, for all of those reasons, I will be supporting this agreement tonight.
Councilmember Higgins, followed by Thomas.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I, as everyone knows, I voted against the sale agreement too. And three years ago, when we started to look at this, I did try to get the county and others involved in trying to keep the site in public open space. They didn't get going until very, very late in the game. They did have an alternative that we could have made work, and that's why I voted no three months ago. I lost that vote, so, the decision was made at that point, and it's sold. I'm not gonna be an obstructionist at this point. In fact, these are really good people, with a really good product, I'm glad that we chose them. That was never the issue, from my perspective. I really feel confident, knowing what I know about them, and the time that I've spent talking with them and, and looking through their materials, that, that they are gonna do what they say they do, and I feel like this is a good agreement, so I'm gonna vote yes.
Councilmember Thomas.
Thank you, Your Honor. As you may be aware, I've been really, really struggling with this. In fact, my fellow councilmembers have actually been helping me here to adjust my way of thinking, and I really appreciate your input. But here's my, my thoughts are still this way. We've cut our retail space in half, and you said we'd have extra discussion on parking situation. Well, that extra discussion is not gonna be before this vote is taken. Only one parking space per unit. They're gonna be parking on the street. I live right in the middle of several apartment complexes, condos, and all spaces are filled up, and there are parking overflows on the street. So, again, I'm worried about where are those people gonna shop, park, and shop in? And you've got, haven't really allowed for a lot of people to park, they're gonna go down that central pathway that Kurt talked about. Now, the good news is, this is a great project, and it's been in, it works for quite a while, and it's a quality project. I guess the one thing that's really selling me is our gentleman that comes from Kent, as I have done, and it really means a lot, because I'm not gonna build some of my backyard that looks bad. And so, I really appreciate you coming several weeks ago, months ago, and tonight. That probably means more to me than anything else, and probably will be the reason I'll vote yes.
Councilmember Barrios.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to also include my thoughts on the retail issue, because that was a concern of mine as well. And when I went down to the track, and you, you were able to witness this yourselves, they still have a, a section of retail property that they haven't been able to lease, and they've tried to discount that piece of property. And the, the fact is that retail as we know it now is changing, and will continue to change because of the Amazons and online purchasing, and, and as a matter of fact, the one retail shop that they do currently have is a bicycle slash coffee and donuts or pastries, all-in-one. So, I guess you can ride a bike and eat your donut at the same time, and drink coffee. I don't know how you do that. But my, my point is that, as a, as a city, as a, as staff, in the future, and we had this conversation yesterday, we really need to look at our expectations when we, when it comes to retail, because we have to keep up with the times, and we have to be realistic with, with developers as they're looking to come into our area to do development. And I think that this was a brilliant job by our staff in terms of what they did with the concessions. And John, I think we won on that one. And, and in light of what, what I saw. And so, thank you to the staff for working through that process and coming up with the, the three concessions. I think that they were brilliant, and Mayor, you did a good job of picking the right people.
Please don't allow him on a bicycle. Councilmember Fincher, followed by Boudel.
I'm gonna be supporting the project because of what things I like, not only because John was, is from Kent, but that he's still here in that area. I like the passion that I saw from the team and the excitement about the project, because it was, it was a quality project, and we can see that that's what it's going to be for years to come. We had the concerns about what it's gonna look like five years up the road, what it's gonna look like 10 years up the road, and how are the people going to be treated, and how are the people going to be feeling who are living there? We have people here who we can go and get answers from without having to write letters across the seas. We have people here who are, local people here who are in the area, and people who are vested in the area. I appreciate our own Public Works Department and our Economic Development Department for all the questions you answered, and the meeting, so that we could get all the questions answered. I did not see another alternative. For, for me, you know, I came and I wanted to keep the park. I wanted to keep the golf course. But then, when there wasn't an alternative to come up with that money, and we had what we knew was a good project, when we knew what we had was a quality project, I didn't wanna take half the money and then guess that we could get the other half the money. I wanted to make sure that we got the best for taking care of the original reasons why we set up and started looking at the possibility of having to sell that project, that piece of land anyway. So, for those reasons, I'm going to be supporting the project.
Councilmember Boudel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm, I'm along the lines of Brenda, and Dana, and Dennis. Originally, I didn't want to sell the Par Three. As, as a resident who has used the Par Three in the past, I saw the value, but I also saw that the Par Three during the winter and fall was unplayable. Learning more about our financial situation and the Parks Department, and realizing that there was no opportunity, that no knight in shining armor was gonna come in and save the Par Three and save the Parks Department with emergency funding, so that it would stay in open space, this development solves a lot of problems, not, not just the financing, but we know that we are going to have an influx of people moving to the Puget Sound. And we need, as a city, to provide quality housing for them. We already have a housing crunch. So, we need to have a development that is going to last, it is going to stay aesthetically pleasing, it is gonna provide open space and amenities to not only the residents that live there, but the people on the West Hill and in the valley, and even on the East Hill, if they decide to come down to the golf course, to the 18-hole and, and visit the shops. I have spoken to and have answered several emails about the negative impact of traffic. I have talked to our Public Works Director about that. He has stated that the city's actually working with State DOT to have the HOV lane on Washington turned into a general purpose. That opens up another lane of traffic, so those people who are coming home on West Valley Highway slash Washington don't have to turn on Meeker, that becomes a two-lane road. They can go to Kent Des Moines Highway, go up the hill, and then turn left on, on Reef Road. There are alternatives. The fact is, we need housing, we need quality housing, and we need to increase our tax base with retail and property taxes. So, that's why I'm voting for it.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion?
Call for the question.
Question has been called for. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Moving on now to other business, item B. This is the six-month moratorium, interim official control prohibiting community health engagement locations, otherwise known as safe injection sites, or some call them safe consumption sites. Making the staff presentation on this, we have our city attorney, Tom Brubaker.
Thank you, Your Honor. I believe you all understand about as well as I do, after all the discussion tonight, what these sites are all about. The motion before you tonight is to, not to set a permanent ban, but to send, set a temporary ban, a moratorium, for up to a six-month period, so that council can look, gain information, look at the pros and cons of this proposition, and determine whether or not they want to allow these, these safe injection sites in the city or not. Under state law, a moratorium, if passed tonight, requires a public hearing. Right now, we're planning to set the public hearing for the next council meeting, September 5th, so proponents and opponents will have another chance to address their concerns to council. At that point, if council moves forward with the moratorium, we will begin the land use, the planning process. It'll go to staff, they'll prepare a report, they'll do analysis, there'll be another opportunity for a public hearing, at least one. As we go through that process, it could go to the Land Use and Planning Board, it could go directly to council, it will go through the Economic and Community Development Committee before it comes back to you for a decision up or down. So, it's just the beginning of a process to gather information and consider the merits and the burdens of the proposition, and determine whether or not we want to send a message to King County that we do or do not want these, this, this use in our city. I will say that, one other thing, just to give you some context, is it appears to me, looking at the resolution, the King County resolution, that the county has set aside two, a little over $2.1 million for these sites in, in the county. And I'd be happy to answer, answer any questions you have.
Any questions of Tom? Council President Boyce.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tom, I know this is a six-month moratorium. Any reason, I mean, we're gonna go through our process and make sure we hear from the public, if we can get that done. public if we can get that done in three months. Is that possible? I mean, can it be done or about we say in six months, it has to be six months?
No, it does not have to be six months. Our normal process, my guess is normally takes more than three months for a zoning code amendment or a land use change. But no, the law just says it can be, the moratorium can be in effect for up to six months. We can also extend that for additional six-month periods. If we don't hold a public hearing within 60 days, then the moratorium ends at 60 days. So, those are sort of the stopping points along the way. But yes, if council finishes the process or if council's rate act in less than six months, it can certainly do that.
Councilmember Higgins followed by Barrios.
Thank you, Your Honor. Tom, I'm wondering about in the recitals, item C. Let me go to the ordinance. Just a second here. In recital C, you say, "There is not currently evidence that community health engagement locations or similar sites reduce drug addiction rates within the communities where they are located." Are you aware of over 40 peer-reviewed studies, including in the Lancet, the New England Journal of Medicine, British Medical Journal, and the Journal of American Medicine that confirm that these sites are effective in reducing drug addiction rates?
My understanding is the data is subject to different interpretations. If you'd like to amend that recital or remove that recital, we can certainly do it.
Yeah, I certainly wouldn't vote for this with that in the recitals. Because it is contradicted by facts.
Councilmember Barrios.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thanks for bringing that up because I think it's important that we consider asking staff to continue to do a little more research in terms of the stats because it's amazing to see the different numbers that we're getting, and some of them seem to be conflicting as we look at the fact that currently, there isn't a single city in the U.S. that has these sites. I know that there's, you know, Seattle's currently considering it. But I'm a stats person. And similar to what we did as we looked at the Marijuana Initiative, we brought in some folks at the council workshop or retreat, and they were, and it was, we got both sides. These are experts, and they were able to give us their opinions. And I would like to see a similar exercise for the council to get that type of information prior to any future decisions.
Councilmember Barrios, just for clarity, are you referencing this particular measure before you or are you referencing a future measure?
As we look at future measures, sorry, not this particular measure, but as we look at future measures in order to address the concerns that were just raised.
Okay. Councilmember, I have Boyce and Barrios on, and I know you've both spoken, so anybody else wish to speak, ask the questions? This is not speaking to, we don't have a motion yet. Councilmember Thomas, do you have a question?
Sort of. Is there anyone who objects to Councilmember Higgins' request to eliminate C? I don't either.
So, Councilmember Ralph, do you have a motion?
I do. Can I have an ordinance number, please? Thank you. I move we adopt ordinance number 4250 with the removal of recital C, imposing a moratorium and interim official control regarding the prohibition of community health engagement locations, safe injection sites, and other uses or activities designated or designed to provide a location for individuals to consume illicit drugs.
Second, we have a motion and a second discussion on the motion. Councilmember Ralph.
Thank you, Your Honor. So, as I have been watching this conversation over the last year at the county level, we've seen information coming out of Vancouver. As has already been presented, there are conflicting reports on these things. I've been listening to the conversation at the county and honestly been growing increasingly concerned about the potential impacts of these sites on our community. As I watched Auburn and Bellevue and Federal Way pass similar ordinances and resolutions, I became more concerned and contacted Council President Boyce about bringing this forward. There's a variety of reasons I am grateful we're having this conversation tonight. First and foremost, this is an opportunity for the city of Kent to take a hold of its own destiny. Without this, there was an option for the county to locate these sites in Kent without that conversation that's going to occur over the next six months. And again, I do want to point out as we're going through this, this is an ordinance to do a moratorium, so we're pushing the pause button on this, which is, to me, a responsible thing to do. It allows the conversation to occur. I will tell you, I have got at least two pages of questions regarding these sites. And that's not something that can be answered immediately. It's going to take a process. I have seen reports out of the site, particularly in Vancouver, that there's increased crime around these sites. And then I've seen reports that say there's no increased crime. I've seen there's reports that talk about the fact that while we're decreasing the overdoses out of 6,500 people that have been through the site, 200 have gone through treatment. So, then you wondered, is this really working to help people with their addiction? We have, and we heard it tonight, we have huge gaps in our treatment that's available in mental health, in our prevention efforts. All of those things, if we're going to look at this crisis, we have to look at all of them together. I have had countless conversations with parents whose children are addicted to opioids, and I have not had one single one of those parents tell me that they thought it was a good idea for their kid to have a place where they could keep using. It's been quite the contrary. It's been, we heard a gentleman describe it this evening as that pain point. In my day job, work with parents that have kids that are in treatment, and it's a question that we ask, and they continuously point out that it's not something they want for their family members. I've got a lot of concerns about this. So, that is why I asked that this ordinance be brought forward, that is why I will be supporting it. There will be a community process, and we will have time to gather additional information. I have to say, I do like what was said tonight about the fact, we've got a lot of issues on our plate, and maybe we're not ready for this. Maybe we are, but we've got things we need to take care of. And at this point, I cannot support safe injection sites in the community of Kent.
Councilmember Boudel followed by Boyce.
Thank you, Madam President. This, sorry, Madam Mayor. I've got 30 years of life experience with this subject that's heavy on my mind. My brother was an addict. My life and my family's life started with his addiction, treatment, refusal for treatment, stealing, doing drugs, enabling others to do drugs. The only thing that worked for him sadly was being homeless for seven years, living in squalor, seeing one of his addict friends die, and having a rehab center come into the abandoned bowling alley that he was living in and offer him a life instead of an existence. What they gave him was nine months inpatient treatment, mental health counseling, life skills, job retraining, full medical workup. He was diagnosed as ADHD at the age of 36 years old. He was estranged from the family because of his addiction, and after he was clean and sober for seven years, we reconciled. And he had said to me, had I not been the one to not allow him to live in my driveway and continue to use, he would have been dead. He had to decide on his own that he wanted to live again instead of exist. I see the problem that we have in the city with the homeless and opioid addiction, and I have a neighbor who has been clean and sober for 39 years who says the same thing. She is a drug and alcohol recovery counselor, and an addict is not going to get clean, and they are not going to stay clean until they are given the tools they need, and they have made up their mind that they are tired of living that way. What I've said before, and I will continue to say, is that this state, this county, needs to provide inpatient treatment more than 30 days. They need to provide mental health for the folks who are struggling with mental health conditions, who are using as a self-treatment option, self-medicating. We need halfway houses so that these people who, once they come out of treatment, can become reintegrated into our society and work and establish a community. We had a halfway house in North Park up until the Great Recession, and the property owner decided that he was just going to stop paying mortgage, and we lost 14 people who lost their ability to be reconnected with the community. And we, as a city, need to support those things. I've been to Vancouver and I've seen the neighborhood where that safe injection site is, and I'm talking to my friend who lives there. Crime has gone up, drug dealings after hours have occurred, businesses has dropped in the neighboring community, and people are still overdosing. It's not the right time. We need to do a holistic solution, not just a Band-Aid and offering a place for people to come in and inject drugs. I'm sorry. I support the ban. I'm not going to support a safe injection site at this time.
Council President Boyce followed by Fincher.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We all have stories up here. We listened to 17 people speak tonight about, you know, pros and cons. Out of those 17, six of them was from Kent, and I think one is only to say yes to move forward. We all, as councilmen, received numerous of email, and all the email that we received, at least what I have, not one was in support of having a safe injection. Our neighboring city, you know, some of those just did a flat-out ban. They say that's it, they don't want it. We, just like marijuana, you know, we could have said, Councilmember Ralph could recommend the flat-out ban, but it's the moratorium, give a chance to think this through. I'm not smart enough. I don't know enough about to say yes. I don't know if I'm about to say no. But I do want to at least get more facts and data before we make a decision, at least I'll make a decision. You know, and I like when our kids speak, you know, and I was impressed what Haley had to say, and I hope I interpret her correctly. She said, "Patient and time." I mean, that's what I heard coming out of her tonight. And I think we need to be patient, we need to take time, and we need to make sure we got our facts and data right before we make a big decision. So, for that reason, I will be supporting the moratorium.
Councilmember Fincher followed by Higgins.
Haley also said education, and that's what we need to do during this time, is to spend that time getting the education so that we can make a good, sound decision. Once this came up, this just came up for the council basically last week. It's not something that we've been talking about and looking at. We've seen it in the news, we've seen it in the papers. But as for conversations, I didn't start reading about them until last week. And I read some of the same articles, it sounds like, that you did. And so, I need, I want to look at good, sound data. I know there was an Institute of Health report. Read lots of articles, but I'm not convinced from what I read. I didn't see anything to show me definitively what, one way or the other, that yes, it is saving people. Yes, I could see that lives are being saved. But are we helping them beyond saving their life? So, I want to be able to see that. I'm concerned about our infrastructure here. We have a police department that is already overstretched. We're not set up, as TJ said, we're not set up, our infrastructure cannot bear that, in my opinion, at this time. So, for us to have that extra time to prepare, to look and see what it is and to make a decision, and then move from that point is what we need to do. Thank you.
Councilmember Higgins.
Well, thank you, Your Honor, and I appreciate the discussion. I respect differing opinions, and I know that some people won't agree with me on this. And that's okay. I don't have 100% agreement inside my house either, so it's just pretty normal. Nobody wants another East Vancouver. It's important to remember that that neighborhood was that way before that center was there, and that's one of the reasons they cited it there. That was a derelict neighborhood prior to the citing that center. We have to allow science and reason to drive our policy discussions and decisions. I hate it when hysteria runs rampant like we're seeing right now. I mean, you can see it, city after city. Last night, it was Renton, Federal Way, good lord. I mean, we're just scared little kids, it feels like, and I just can't stand votes like this. I hate them. It's not the right way to make public policy. There was an article in the Seattle Times Today, column by Nicole Brodeur interviewing Nancy McCallum, the mother of Laine Staley, the lead singer of Alice in Chains, who died in 2002. And she said, "Addiction is a disease like any other, like a cancer. It can be treated but can also recur. We shouldn't judge. The emphasis should be on research and treatment. Laine Staley entered drug treatment 10 times and his heart stopped five times. He was saved only because there were people around. When his heart stopped for the last time, he was all alone." That's what these centers do. Another thing I want to say, this is not an either-or. We don't have to stop detox centers. If we do these centers, we need to do both. We need to do prevention, treatment, and last-chance life-saving, like the forum came up with in their recommendations. You know, ignoring this epidemic, and I don't think we are, but it needs to be said that just pretending that this problem doesn't exist isn't going to make it go away. Here's what my no vote is not about. I don't want more crime. I don't want to cause problems for our businesses and citizens. I don't necessarily believe Kent is the best site for a center. It could be somewhere else in South King County or somewhere else in the county entirely. I don't know that. We haven't gone through that discussion yet. Here's what my no vote is about. It's a vote against hysterical policymaking. It's a vote for rational policymaking based on science and reason. We are in a public health crisis. We need to support our relatives, friends, and neighbors in the midst of this emergency. It's tempting to follow the herd. It's also tempting to hide behind the six-month moratorium and say, "Well, we'll think about it. I won't be here in six months, so you guys will do what you want," and that's fine. But what I really believe needs to be said is that these centers need to be considered as part of a holistic approach to the problem. The statistics show that they work. The studies show that they work. And that they don't increase crime, by the way. And if one of my relatives were addicted, I'd want one last chance for them to get help in any way possible. And that's why I'm going to vote no.
Councilmember Thomas.
Thank you, Your Honor. My story pretty much emulates Councilmember Boudel. I lost a brother-in-law. What I want to say tonight was I really enjoy the fact that we had opposing views. There was no laughter, jeering, teasing on one side or the other, unlike what happened in Virginia this weekend. And I really appreciate the citizens of our community being able to come together, talk about things, even opposing views, just as Dennis said. Hey, some of us aren't going to side with Dennis on this. Next time, we will on something else. And so, as you said, and some of the others that testified, we're going to spend the next six months getting properly educated, like Bill said today. He's not real smart, but that wasn't the way you said it perhaps. But what he's saying is, hey, I'm not prepared tonight to make a real, firm decision on this. I need to learn a little bit more about this and then make a sound I need to learn a little bit more about this and then make a sound decision, and I appreciate that. I really do. So I think I'll end with that. I just want to say thank you for the folks that testified. It was great. There was a lot of discussion. I really appreciated TJ's. I don't think he's here anymore, but, oh, you are back there. There you are, hiding in the corner. Anyway, I really appreciate some of the things you said. We probably really aren't prepared for something like this for our city, but we'll see with proper education what will happen.
Any other discussion on the motion? All those, call for the question has been asked, so our city clerk will call the roll on the vote. Call for the question.
No one asked for a roll.
No one asked for a roll.
Call for the question. City clerk, I have a question. Yes. Don't call the roll. Okay. That's the answer to the question. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
The motion passes, six to one.
Yeah, we have an ordinance.
Yeah, we have. The ordinance number is four-two-five-zero. So we move on now to bids. There are none, so we move into reports from our committee members. Council President Boies.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. During our council workshop, we had two presentations. One was on construction inflation. Pretty much bids seem to be going a lot higher through inflation. There are some concern about, with some of the projects we are kind of outlining, with the economy doing so well, and we're concerned about just with the cost and so on. So the team will continue to focus on that and continue to keep eyes on the inflation. The other thing we talked about was the Sound Transit, the Kent Station, pretty much was to increase access for all riders to the Kent Station. We've got a few sites that we're still looking at for a possibility for a new parking garage in Kent. The problem is, at least from my perspective, is many years out, twenty-twenty-one or twenty-twenty-three, before we can even see that. So we made it clear to Sound Transit that we definitely would like to see that garage move a lot further, so they took that into consideration, and they have a timetable out for its next step, for its holding stakeholder meeting, Meeting of Public Works, ECDC, and then the council recommendations will be right around October seventeenth. That ends my report.
Thank you, Mr. President. My report is going to be in response to a question we received on the police Facebook page, specifically having to do with what are we doing with a police headquarters named after Robert E. Lee? And considering the fact of the most recent activities that have gone on over a certain Robert E. Lee statue, I thought I would bring to your attention our own Robert E. Lee, with whom we have great pride in what he accomplished in this city. So when one asks what's in a name, sometimes it's misperceptions because of different Robert E. Lees in this case. So Robert E. Lee was police chief for the city of Kent from nineteen forty-eight to June of sixty-six. Upon his retirement, he was appointed by the city council to the position of Kent Chief of Police Emeritus. In fact, it's in Resolution five-five-seven from the city of Kent. He served then as a Kent City Council member from nineteen sixty-eight through seventy-two, and then he also worked for Manusman Tally, a Kent manufacturer of computer printers. I met Robert E. Lee when I was hired in nineteen eighty-one as the Kent Chamber of Commerce Executive Director. Bob, as we called him, was the commissioned membership salesperson for the Kent Chamber of Commerce. In fact, the Kent Chamber of Commerce established the Robert E. Lee Membership Development Award to be given out annually in his honor. Robert E. Lee also served as the Kent School District Hearing Officer, and he founded the Kent Juvenile Court Committee. His vast community service garnered him an award from the Kent Rotary Club. In the early nineteen sixties, Kent City Hall expanded to the south into what was then the King County Library. So this is in the early nineteen nineties when we expanded. The old library was remodeled to accommodate our police department. The police headquarters were dedicated in memory of former Chief Robert E. Lee on September eighteen, nineteen ninety-two. Chief Lee was highly regarded in this community for both civic and law enforcement leadership roles. It is an honor that our Kent Police Headquarters are named in his memory. So I just wanted to give light on the fact, we have a Robert E. Lee that we continue to celebrate. Administration, Derek Matheson.
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to take a moment here to recognize our staff for their hard work on our two big agenda items this evening. First one was the Marquee on Meeker, where Tom Brubaker, Ben Walters, Kurt Hanson, Tim Laporte, Julie Peraskandola, and before Julie, Jeff Watling, and their staffs put in countless hours, attended countless negotiation and meetings, and created countless pages of documents on the purchase-and-sale agreement, the development agreement, and the permit process. So I want to thank their, that group for everything they've done to get us to this point this evening. Secondly, I wanted to thank Tom Brubaker and his staff for their work on the Community Health Engagement Locations Moratorium. We have a packet deadline of approximately Thursday. The council president asked to place this on the agenda Wednesday, and Tom and his staff turned around an ordinance in short order that made tonight's discussion possible. So just some great work by our staff that shouldn't go unnoticed. Finally, my written report for this evening is in the packet, and there is no executive session.
Thank you, Jerry. Economic and Community Development.
In a minute, Your Honor.
Operations Committee.
Thank you, Your Honor. Tonight, our main topic of conversation was the budget adjustment that will occur for the period of April first through June thirtieth. The good news in that conversation was the addition to our budget of two grants over, totaling nearly nine million dollars for transportation projects that we've got going in on the city, two-twenty-fourth and the BNSF grade separation. So we put those into the budget. We also are working on, our finance has come up with a new way for us to track BNO funds that is more detailed and easier to see, so we'll follow those through the process. So that was included in that budget adjustment as well.
Parks and Human Services.
We have a meeting coming up next, on Thursday. We did not meet last month, but we have some things going on. Registration opens on August twenty-first for the fall and winter sports. Those will begin in October, and adaptive recreation registration begins August sixteenth at eight a.m., also for the fall and winter events. And then the middle school late-night starts up here soon, Mill Creek Middle School on September fifteenth, and Meridian Middle School on September twelfth. Both of those have evening hours, are for sixth to eighth graders, and it's an open gym, games, sports, arts and crafts, and, let's see, the Meridian Middle School is seventh grade to seniors up to nineteen years of age. So all of that information is available on our website, and finally, get your copy of our Fall Programs Program Guide from the Parks Department that's available at City Hall, the Senior Center, and Kent Commons. And you can also find that online at webreg, W-E-B-R-E-G, at kentwa.gov.
Thank you. Public Safety.
Yes, Your Honor, I sat in for councilmembers during that meeting, and of course, Ralph did a phenomenal job. Couple of things in a minute as well, but the couple of things we did talk about is adjusting the fee for public safety, traffic school, online traffic school, and also looking at bringing traffic school into the senior citizen, which I thought is really been proactive and a good way of trying to reach our community. And the last thing was with the pantalade substation lease, we're standing at lease, which is, I think we've been in pantalade, it's two years now, Ralph, at this substation, roughly, give and take? Yeah. So that's it, Your Honor.
Thank you. Public Works.
Your Honor, I'd ask Councilmember Ralph to make a report, and then I'd like to go to the order, if I may.
After, perhaps if you could wait until after the Regional Fire Authority reports, and then we'll go into the, go to the order.
That'll be fine, thanks.
All right.
Was not prepared here. I'm pulling up the, pulling up the agenda. Let's make sure that this is the right agenda here. Okay, it looks like we went over a couple of different things. One of the topics of conversation was some changes that are being made to RIA eight, which is our watershed inventory area that Kent participates in, in a small portion. We talked about some of those impacts. Most of the changes will be affecting cities outside of Kent, but we do have a small portion that's up in our watershed. We had a review of some transportation grants, updates on our two-forty-eighth street project, and also some conversation, because we could not make it through the process without talking about levies. We had updates on the Holly Road and Horseshoe Bend levies.
Thank you. Councilmember Higgins, you're good of the order.
Regional Fire Authority.
I said I wanted to do Regional Fire Authority first.
I know you did.
Yes, Councilmember Thomas. I don't want to skip Dennis.
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, Council President Boies mentioned the driving school for seniors. Just want you to know, it's free for us, guys, so that's good. Okay. Seniors, you know, okay. Special location tomorrow night, five-thirty, Fire Station Number Seventy-Six, which is just off the Seventy-Second Street. We hired and, or put forth an offer, and it was accepted by our new fire chief, Matt Morris, and we stole him from Henderson, Nevada. We will be putting our stamp of approval on the first meeting in September. So this is pretty exciting, and I think you guys are going to meet the chief, and you're going to like him a lot. He's a good guy. It's only our fourth one in the city of Kent, a paid one, so, thank you.
Thank you. Now, Councilmember Higgins.
Well, thank you, Your Honor. I appreciate that. I just, you know, I think we've all been thinking about what happened last weekend, and I wanted to remember the young woman, or thirty-two-year-old woman, Heather Hyer, who got killed in Charlottesville. Nelson Mandela quote that Barack Obama tweeted is something that has been going around in my mind. "No one is born hating another person because of the color of his skin or his background or his religion. People must learn to hate, and if they can learn to hate, they can be taught to love. For love comes more naturally to the human heart than its opposite." That again is Nelson Mandela. And I just want to say, in response to some very disturbing remarks by the President, you know, there are not two equal sides here. There's an American side, and it stands against white supremacists, neo-Nazis, anti-Semites, and the KKK. And I know where all you guys stand on that. I really think we all need to condemn this equivocacy that is occurring. It sickens me, and I want to say clearly where I stand on it.
Councilmember Fincher.
And I had two things. One, the first one being, on a night with, much along the lines of Dennis, on a night when we had our reappointments for the Cultural Communities Board, which was very apropos with the timing. Sir Edmund Burke, many years ago, told us that "All it takes for evil to triumph is for good men to do nothing." I think an agreement with Dennis that all of us need to speak up. You know, the old, "If you see something, say something." We see what's going on in this country, and we're much better than the smaller group of people that we see. We know there's a hundred twenty-five more hate groups now that the authorities are tracking than there were two years ago. But there's many more of us than there are of them. You know, when I look and I see the mob mentality that is taking hold, and I look, you know, I watch the TV, and I see the hate in some of the faces. Racism has never, you know, we heard post-racism, post-racial America after President Obama was elected. Racism has never stopped. It's never been post-racial America, and it never will be without us talking about race, without us talking about the differences in cultures, and without us recognizing that there are many commonalities between us, without us looking at where we are as a culture and realizing that we're the ones who are separating us, and that there are many gifts that each culture shares. And in sharing those, if you're not taking part in those riches, you're missing out. And so we all want the same things for our families. We want our families to be happy. We want them to be safe. We want them to be successful. And in that, there's no, there's at least not very many people who would disagree with that. That's one of those commonalities and one of those starting points. So I just want to say to everybody, make sure that you are reaching out to people. Smile when you see somebody coming down the street who you don't know. Don't just sit at the table with people who look just like you, talk just like you. There's so many things that you can learn from people who look different than us, who sound different than us, but are just, who would be just as lovely to know as the, as who I am. But, you know, on a serious note, that is what it's going to take, stepping outside of your comfort zone if you're not comfortable doing that, finding out how much fun it is, going to some of the different cultural events that we have here. There are opportunities right here in the city that are free for us to take part in. Do that. Please, I ask you to do that. Speak to people, and remember kindness. It's easy to be kind. So that's all I'm going to say on that, except that there are videos to start your learning process, TV Twenty-One, Cultural Communities that we have right here. You can learn about the Sikh community. You can learn about the Muslim community. You can learn about some of the things that some of the immigrants go through. There will be all sorts of conversations going on. Take a look. You can stream them online. The other thing is that Grandview Apartments opened this weekend, and I have to say, I was supportive of the project, you know, once I came on and learned about it, but I was pleasantly surprised. I was surprised at the quality that they have there. If you haven't been through, I advise you to go through and take a look. If you want to see pictures, I took tons of pictures. I was really surprised by how nice those apartments are up there. So thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Fincher, and yes, you are fun.
Thank you.
Councilmember Budell.
I stand in solidarity of my councilmembers that hate has no place in this city. It has no place in this country. I had told a, recounted a story on my public Facebook page that as a fourteen-year-old working in the, at a swap meet in Los Angeles, I met an elderly couple that were tattooed, that they had escaped a concentration camp in Germany as children, and the wife hid her tattoos best she could in eighty-five, ninety-degree weather. Her husband, however, short sleeves, and proudly displayed his mark because, as he said, "Your generation doesn't know. Your grandfathers, your fathers, they fought in this. If we do not educate the young that humans can be completely inhumane to humans and treat them worse than animals, we as a society will never evolve, we will never find peace." And so, as a teenager, that, that set the course for me to open my eyes, open my ears, and open my heart. And every time I have left, when I left the nest, I have sought multicultural communities because I wanted to enrich my life. I have made amazing friends that I now consider family. I have, I have helped my family enrich their lives by introducing them to my friends, and I think as a resident of this city that is so culturally diverse, it is imperative that every single one of us takes that step out of our com- that every single one of us takes that step out of our comfort zone and gets to know someone who looks a little different, who may speak a little different. But in the end, we will find, you will find, like I found, that underneath the pigment, we are all the same. We want health, happiness, children to be successful, a roof over our head, and to smile and to be loved at the end of the day. And if there's hate in your heart, that's never going to happen. So I hope every resident takes the opportunity to get to know someone different, and our president needs to open his heart too.
Councilmembers. Thank you so much. There's no one else who wants to speak. We're adjourned.